We're good?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special study session for Thursday, September 21. Do we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Joe.
Oh. Sorry.
It's all right.
Councilman Aurelio?
Here.
Councilman Blazak?
Present.
Vice President Swet?
Present.
Michael Schilling is absent. Wayne Pondinas is absent. Clerk Treasurer Veth Hernandez is absent. She did send an email advising that she would not be able to make the meeting tonight. And Town Manager Joe Wazwati is present.
Okay. So we open our study session with item A, which is the 2024 budget presentation. Joe?
Thank you. I am honored to present the fiscal 2024 budget for the town of St. John. This budget sets the course for the town and defines the priorities of services for the community. It has been a culmination of the last couple of months' effort by the department heads, Clerk Treasurer, our financial advisor, Senator Dalton, to balance available resources and provide high-quality services to the residents of St. John and businesses and visitors. Given the ongoing national financial uncertainty, we continue to take necessary steps to contain spending and focus our attention on maintaining our public safety and infrastructure projects in 2024. Our budget considers conservative revenue projections as we move into an economy with higher interest rates. Tonight's presentation is a high-level presentation of the total 2024 budget. It provides an overview of the town's major funds and identifies upcoming budget priorities. As we are aware, we did approve budgeting for the water and sanitary, or excuse me, water and wastewater utilities for the first time this year. We're budgeting those utilities as well in our overall budget. The town's fiscal year covers the period from January 1, 2024, through January, excuse me, December 31, 2024. The projected expenditures and appropriations for the town of St. John include water, sanitary districts, utilities, and the civil budget in a combined total of $40.5 million. Next.
Are you on the next slide? Look at you. Which way do I click on here? This guy? Okay, thanks.
Tonight is our budget presentation workshop. We've released the Form 3 in Gateway, which is our taxpayer notice announcing our public hearing for the budget and appropriation. As our town council meeting on September 27th, the council will consider the fiscal year 2024 budget on first reading following a public hearing on the matter. From September 28th to the 24th of October, we will consider any adjustments that are needed. On October 25th, the council will adopt the budget on second reading. So we've been working on many projects and planning for many more this past year. We've completed, or in the process of completing, $9.1 million in road and infrastructure projects, which include $3.4 million for the 93rd Avenue project, $2.1 million for our CCMG project, completed studies for wells eight and nine, $900,000 in improving our water filtration, $2.1 million in ARPA funds for road improvement projects, $1.4 million for our Acorn Water and Sewer roadway project. We have also had strong commitments this year to our public safety. This past year, we hired two additional police officers. We hired two additional firefighters. Nineteen percent of our ARPA money spent thus far has been to public safety. We've authorized a new fire pumper. We've authorized a new ambulance. We've purchased and outfitted our squad cars as well. Let me go back here a moment before we get to that point. Quality of life projects in 2023 that have been completed. We will complete our 109th, 101st Avenue and Calumet Avenue corridor study. We're working to complete master planning for our parks, recreation, water and sanitary, our five-year road improvement plan, and stormwater. Our riverfront district to enhance the economic development opportunities and expand community events. Freedom Fest, our concert in the parks and our Christmas in the, our concert in the parks and our Christmas in the park. Something that we need to really take a look at when we're reviewing our budget is our assessed value. Our assessed value since 2019 has increased by 38.6% from $1.2 billion to $2.07 billion. Building permit applications are down year-over-year by 29%. However, St. John continues to be one of the fastest-growing communities in our state. When compared to the pre-pandemic levels, building permit applications are down only by 13.7% from 2019. Our strengths that we have as a community, we do have one of the lowest municipal tax rates in all of Lake County. We have an excellent bond rating. We have good fund balances, and we're investing our fund balances and earning interest on those funds. Our 2024 budget highlights. Here's a listing of some of the 2024 projects that we have teed up and getting ready to go. We have a $2.4 million project to complete the wellhouses for wells eight and nine. We got $1 million to complete the water main replacement on US 41. We have complete design engineering for 109th and Parish Avenue roundabout that will be in 2024. We have, we will be completing our water filtration media changeout for our water filtration plants, so that way we can operate at a higher capacity to provide additional water as we bring on wells eight and nine in the next year. We have a $2.1 million road improvement project with $1 million in grant money anticipated for the CCMG project for next year. We have $2.8 million for Water Main Interconnect and $900,000 for the water filtration plant as I talked about. Complete evaluation and negotiations for increasing our capacity for the sewer sanitary system with the town of Sherrville. This is about $9.2 million in infrastructure and projects teed up for next year. We will continue to decrease our overall property tax rate. We will continue to invest in public safety and critical services. We have a renewed commitment to leveraging grant opportunities as well. As you can see, our allocation for our general fund, we do have the allocations for our general fund at about 45% for the police department, 30% for fire, 12% for general administration, 10% for building and planning, 2% for the clerk treasurer's office, and 1% for parks. Overall, our general fund balances have been pretty stable, and we anticipate that to continue. The yellow areas, as indicated on this chart, begin with the minimum reserve of 15%. As you can see in the blue, that's our fund balance for the general fund, I'm sorry, the green, and then the blue is the maximum 35% rate. So we're well, well above the minimum, and we're riding real close to the maximum. So as far as that goes, we're in a very healthy financial position. As far as the, our overall budget revenues, are sufficient to keep our budget balanced for the fiscal year 2024. Our police department. Police department's been doing a fantastic job over the course of this last fiscal year. Right now, we have 30 full-time sworn and civilian personnel, four part-time personnel. Our total salaries, retirement, longevity, and benefit costs are about $3.8 million. Our supplies that we spend for the police department are only $115,000. Services and charges at $254,000, and our total capital outlay anticipated is about $23,000. Chief Flores is here. If any of you folks have any questions, or if there's additional stuff that you want to present, chief.
Thank you. I guess I, is there any questions? I'll take those first. There's only a couple highlights that I'd like to highlight with, with gentlemen tonight. Basically, the, there wasn't really a whole lot of changes to our budget this year, other than adding the SRO and then increasing the specialty pay for the people that are on call from 200 to 300 per paycheck. And that basically is just, it's been 200 for, since I've been here. So that just, that just gives them a little bonus for being on call, coming on, you know, during the middle of the night, so.
Other than that, I think that's, sorry. That's pretty much it, other than a couple little things here and there. It's, it's pretty much the same as last year's, not a lot of increases, like I said, other than what we've already presented. The only other thing that, you know, the, the training costs over the last couple of years have gone up significantly because of the cost of ammo. We're required to shoot at least a minimum of three times a year. So just to give you an example, the nine-millimeter, the range ammo went from 125 to 200 a case. The duty ammo for rifle went, went up $300 from 1300 to 1600 a case. So it's, it's, it's gone up quite a bit, and the range ammo for that's went up $180 a case. So, so that's been kind of a big increase for us the last couple of years, so. But other than that, there's, there wasn't a whole lot of other changes on there that, that we have, other than, like I said, the SRO, the addition that we did there, which is going well.
Just something to kind of add to that, I kind of, I didn't really discuss this, is we are taking some of the, the burden off of the public safety LOAT and transferring that to the CCD.
CCD, yeah.
So that, we are moving some of those resources into that because we don't want to, you know, tap out our, our public safety LOAT fund. So that was kind of why that's, you know, last year, we didn't do that, this year we are, so. And we, as you can see, we reduced the public safety LOAT by 24% year-over-year, so, you know, the, the chief's been doing a good job at, at managing his budget and his resources within his department.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You glad to get your two officers?
Yeah.
Helps you a bunch, doesn't it?
Big time. It did. As soon as we get that one done out of the academy in November, we're going to be able to staff all the time, three minimum.
Three shifts.
Yes. So that we're filing.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. What's the capital outlay for?
Um, basically, that's just.
Twenty-three grand.
That's basically just some other little capital, small projects that we had. Little odds and ends here and there, yeah.
I thought maybe a second car, you.
No, we don't have any big capital projects that we're planning for next year.
Well, for 23 grand, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty status quo. I mean, we don't have any big projects coming up.
I just saw it, and it kind of, I thought, capital?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Other than that, the SRO, SRO officer is a solid addition.
It is.
Definitely good.
It is, and thank you, gentlemen, for approving that. It, it helped out a lot, and the school's happy about it, so thank you.
Well, we're happy.
So technically, he got three officers this last year, but.
Yeah. So we're, we're good. We're doing good, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Technically, our kids are going to be better off.
Yeah.
Yeah. And capital-wise, I mean, you've been very generous, his council's been generous, we're doing pretty well, so thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Good job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So with respect to the clerk treasurer office, there's really no changes. The funding levels were maintained from what she'd requested in her original budget presentation to, to the budget team. She has seven full-time personnel, there's no additional changes there. There's two part-time personnel. Again, there's no, no changes there. The total salaries, retirement, longevity, and benefit costs, $673,484. Supplies, $3,000. Services and charges, $52,000, and then capital outlay about $12.5. That's, and clerk treasurer, does anyone have any questions on?
Just, when you talk about total salaries, that's including a standard raise all the way across the board for, for police, for clerk treasurer, for all the departments that we're talking about?
Yeah, so, that's a very good question. So with respect to the, the raises, there is a 3% increase in all of the civilian and sworn personnel. So it's 3% across the board.
3%.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we've got the administration and town council. There are three full-time staff there. There's no changes recommended in this budget. Five council members, five plan commissioners. Total salaries, retirement, longevity, and benefits of $461,613. Supplies, $7,000. Services and charges, $825,909, and capital outlay of about $5,000. Operationally, the town council administration budget has decreased by about 5.1% from the 2023 level. We've held the line on our services and charges. We've increased our engineering budget by $300,000 to accommodate the NERC C Klein Avenue project. We will receive about 80% of those funds reimbursed through the grant as this project progresses through to 2027 start date. We will have increased the budget line item. We've decreased others to where our overall services and charges are lower than the 2023 numbers. With respect to the Klein Avenue project, I would, I would just like to add that we did have this considered and budgeted as far as the revenue and the expenditure in the general fund. If that does change, obviously, that's going to, you know, change our overall numbers. However, we would have to do an additional appropriation on those funds if it's in a different fund. And, but the expense would also go along with that as well.
Did we get the engineering money yet for the original money we put up?
The, the money is appropriated by Endot, so the money is there.
Oh, well, that's.
It's reimbursed, so we get 80, 80 cents on the dollar that we submit.
Correct, I know that, but I was just curious if the funds had actually come into our coffers yet.
They won't until we submit the reimbursement, which we have invoices that we need to submit the reimbursement.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But we got to pay them first.
Of course.
Which is going to bring us to a later thing on appropriate, additional appropriations that I'd like to do for this year.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Out of the general fund, so that way we can get reimbursed and pay our expenses.
Yeah, stay on top of it. We pay it, and then they will reimburse us.
Correct.
So when we say 2027 will start, that's when we start pushing dirt, so we have some engineering, do we have engineering work that's being done already for this?
Yes, the Structure Point was engaged to do the design engineer, so they're in phase one right now, design. They'll get into a phase two design as that project moves along.
Do you know when that set, that phase two would begin?
No, I don't.
They basically.
I would, I would anticipate probably by 2024, 25.
I was going to say, I spoke to Eric, and they figure they have about a year of engineering and permits.
Yeah.
Because the permits.
It's a very lengthy, lengthy process, yeah.
I know it's a.
And since you're playing with government's money, this is not NERC C funds, this is actually government federal.
Federal dollars.
Dollars.
Endot works on a five-year plan.
Yeah.
And they, they like to stick to that.
This is supposed to start, this was supposed to start in 2025, however, when a couple of the other towns backed out, they said, what do you want to do? And I said, we'll take anything that's available, send it, you know, we'll take it early. So they moved us up a year. We weren't supposed to start till 2025.
That's what the engineering came from. They approved all of our engineering expenses early.
Yep, they gave us the money a year early because the other towns said, we can't afford to match, so therefore, they backed out, and they said, we got these monies available, and I said, we'll take it. And they said, okay.
Okay, what other towns, because it only goes through our town? What other towns?
No, there's, well, there's two others. Their money went to three different towns. Our project was one.
That was other proj, for other projects.
Right, there were two others.
Projects, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So moving right along, maybe? Okay. Building and Planning Department, currently, there are seven full-time personnel. We're not recommending any changes on those. There are seven part-timers that are currently budgeted for those, that department. Total salaries, retirement, longevity, benefit costs are $782,078. Supplies, $17,000. Service charges, services and charges, $180,620, and capital outlay of $5,000. This department is funded from predominantly your general fund. Water utility and wastewater utility cover portions of salaries. John Gill is here as the interim director. If you folks have any questions with respect to building and planning's budget?
Yeah, our budget's largely the same this year from last year. Capital outlay would be for office equipment next year, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
You guys have stood some tough, some tough summers, let's say. Not this one so much as last summer and the summer before. You guys have done an outstanding job, John.
Thank you.
How do you feel? So the, so the building permits are down 40%? Is that the number we said?
About 29%.
29%. So do you feel, do you feel that relief in your office from those permitting being down 29%?
Yeah, I think it's kind of, I'd say, in the, the record years before that, it kind of felt like you were on a treadmill at full speed, just waiting to slide off the back, and now we kind of, we can kind of briskly walk and, and catch our breath, and it's kind of a nice, you know.
Instead of, instead of having cards, your, your permit cards, instead of having an entire drawing table.
Yeah, we have a drafting table where we line up the inspection tickets, and I mean, in the busy, busier years, it'd be covered in inspections every morning, and, you know, you got to get them done by the end of the day, so.
So you had room to put tomorrow's up there?
Yeah.
You feel that you guys are able to do a, you know, a full and comprehensive job, and, you know, all the, you need, you have enough funds, even if you got snapback, 10 or 15% to be able to do what needs to be done in building and planning?
Yeah, I think we, we have enough guys with, with the part-time inspectors and the part-time electoral inspectors where everybody can go to a job site, do their inspection, focus on what they need to, and not shortchange any of the inspections to get.
Make sure they're building the code.
Correct, yep.
Yep. Thank you.
So John, water utility, wastewater utility, both went up 25%. Is that more salaries brought over, or is that?
That is exactly what that is. Yeah, that's from the, the transfer for the personnel that we had to transfer from one department to the other department.
Okay.
Doesn't that have something to do with the stormwater?
No, not at all.
Nothing at all?
No, stormwater not even considered.
So he's not, his department's not involved in it at all?
No.
Okay.
Not right now.
Okay.
And I just want to say to John, I really appreciate you stepping up and, and kind of filling in for Sergio. I know you, you've got, you're, you're wearing a lot of hats, but you're doing a, a really good job, and it is appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we have our fire department. Right now, our, our fire department has 18 full-time staff, which were, I guess, up technically three from in 2023. We've got 32 firefighters, POC, and part-time, and that's, that's a rough number because those numbers are fluid, sometimes they change. The total salaries, retirement, longevity, benefit cost of $2.3 million. We've got supplies at about $53,000. Service charges, services and charges of $273,000. Capital outlay of about $5,000. We have $400,000 considered out of the Acume Fire Fund for the down payment on the fire truck. So we would, and we have anticipated in this fiscal year, doing a lease purchase on a little bit more than half of that amount on the upcoming fire truck. That would be a five-year lease purchase for the, the fire truck as well, so that's what we're looking at and anticipating going into this fiscal year.
So I would like to talk about a few things, and I'll let you guys ask me questions, but I just got back from Sefin, where we ordered the truck yesterday, and they gave me some news saying that we probably won't see it to 2025. I tried, which directly affects our budget, but I tried to hammer down a date, and they were not willing to do anything like that. So just be, just give me back a little bit.
Well, that might be something, then, we would take that $400,000 and encumber it for the next.
Yeah, just, just it would be encumbered or moving to the following year. So it's not like we're losing it, but just so as we're planning, it would help, and not help, but with Daniel, Joe, and all you guys, with the, the fund balance, that is a big factor.
What would be the add, Kevin?
There is zero add. It, it, they're still dealing with supply chain issues.
No, 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 I meant for the cumulative fund, okay, the.
So it was, we're going to take about, I think we're paying half of it down, I believe, and then we're going to take half in a.
Here's 400.
Can you?
Now, it being it's delayed, all right? The cumulative fund's going to go up in balance, is it not?
It'll just maintain whatever.
It would maintain, and, yeah. We wouldn't use that 400, we'd encumber it.
No, 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 no. I, I realize that. Doesn't there get the additional money being added to the cumulative fund, so it could be, end of the year, could be 450 or?
Yeah, the Acume Fire is still going to make that additional fund that we get, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It's going to be added to the fund, which means our down payment could be bigger, or you're going to have a little bit left over after making the down payment if you use 400.
Right, so Acume Fire right now has 780, or, excuse me, 738,000 as of June.
So in other words, the 400 is only part of it.
We're anticipating $249,300 in revenue for Acume Fire. So that 400,000 is, is, yeah.
But we're only going to use 400,000 to down payment on the fire truck?
Right, and, and again, that, that number's pretty fluid.
I, I didn't know.
So if we want to do 500,000 or 600,000 in 2025.
Unfortunately, Acume Fire, and we're going to go off a little bit on tangent here, and I don't want to do that for everyone's time.
No, no, I just thought it would be less payments on the lease purchase.
It could be down, it could be down the road, so we'll, we'll make more money in there.
Maybe negotiate a better deal on the payments.
I mean, the good thing is, we, when we bought it, we locked into the price. It, it's very much a supply chain issue. They're a growing company, so they're moving into another building. Zach was with me yesterday, we got a lot of hate.
That was going to be my next question, we locked in the price.
Price is locked in, so like chassis are here, this is, a lot of fire truck stuff that I didn't know I got yesterday, so it was interesting. But the other thing that was on my slide was the three people. You guys appropriated two additional. The third one is, is the, I came last month or two months ago, where, where we were moving money out of my part-time budget, because I still have part-timers that aren't, so that person we're trying to fill for as well, so.
You just stole your part-time and moved it into full-time.
Just stole part-time money, but you did also give two new people, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Well, that's, that's what Joe mentioned when we opened.
Yeah. The other thing that you'll see in my budget is, it's just like everyone else, it's essentially the same as last year. There is an increase into our officer pay, so the gentlemen and the ladies that I have in, in a managerial wall make next to nothing for a lot of extra responsibility, so that is included in there. It's like next to nothing, 25 cents on the hour to manage people, make some pretty big decisions, so we, we increased that a little bit. POC, the paid-on-call change, there's a paid-on-call change, the way that we're doing that, to incentivize it, come to training, come to everything else. We have more volunteers now than we've had in many years, so we're trying to utilize that, because it does offset some of our costs on the full-time and, and part-time side. But again, that's a very transient workforce, and they're, a lot of them are applying, so hopefully, we're able to hire them eventually. And then later on in this meeting, I'll have a potential for a MIH, Mobile Integrated Health, we'll talk about that in a little bit, but what that would do is, it's a, it's going to be a fully funded initiative where I could get another full-time employee, zero cost. We'll be able to move this person to help the community, we get a zero-cost, full-time employee, kind of, kind of like the SRO, I know there's an associated cost there, this would be zero. So we'll talk about that later. I talked about the engine and grants. We are doing really well with grants. I, I spend a lot of time looking for grants. This year, we had a $10,000 grant from Indian Workforce Development that paid for paramedic class. We did receive a $5,000 grant from NIPSCO, a $5,000 grant from Enbridge. We still have FEMA grants out, and they unfortunately don't play well with towns and cities, and would announce it beforehand, so they're probably going to announce in October. But we have a $900,000 grant for health and safety, some additions to the fire station of making that safe for our new gear and everything else there, a $90,000 grant for some supplies, which is a group grant, and then we have the SAFER grant. SAFER grant is for staffing, and that's at a 1.7 million right now, so none of that has came back, which is still good news. We'll see how that goes. Any questions for me on the budget?
Are we going to be staffed full-time by next year?
So we, so right now, I mean, with the positions that are, that are afforded to us right now, we'll be, be allowed or be able to provide five full-time members, if they're not off sick, vacation, or personal, per shift, with two additional part-timers during the day, one at night. The reason we drop down at night is we have our volunteers who traditionally work in eight to five or another job elsewhere and are able to help respond, so I'm confident to say that we will, we'll be able to staff at least five, which provides an ambulance I'm confident to say that we will, we'll be able to staff at least five, which provides an ambulance and, and that engine, uh, which is something that we haven't been able to do. We typically staff two ambulances and the engine, so we have made leaps and bounds.
That's what I was curious about.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, for doing a good job. Um, our Public Works Department is up next, so, um, we've got twenty-two full-time personnel authorized in this, um, this budget. Total salaries, retirement, longevity benefits, costs one-point-seven-eight million. Supplies, three-hundred-twenty-three thousand. Services and charges, two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, um, which, that includes our street sweeper lease as well. Um, our capital outlay that we have is about eight-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, which is mostly our CCMG grant in the MVH. So, um, you know, if you take a look at our MVH, we are spending a pretty heavy, uh, amount in there. Again, that's attributed to the CCMG and, um, for the most part, um, we don't have, um, a, a pool of ARPA money, which we used five-hundred-some-thousand, um, out of this year's budget for that as well. Um, the restricted fund, obviously that's mostly your CCMG project and then your low, uh, local roads and streets as well, so. Um, Mr. Davis is here, um, to speak if you, any of you guys have any questions about what's going on in Public Works and what our next, uh, what our fiscal year is looking like, so Bob, if there's anything you wanna add, please feel free.
Uh, sure, good evening. I'd just like to say, working with, uh, Mr. Wizwadi and Daniel from Senator Dalton and working on the MVH budget, uh, we were conservative, but, uh, we also, uh, put money where we needed it. Uh, when Joe starts talking about these big numbers, we have a lot out there. Uh, a lot of that can change when you're looking at it. As he was talking, the ARPA money, and a couple of months ago was approved for two dump trucks. We, we were able to get our name on one truck, which might show up middle of next summer. The other truck, we might be able to bid on it next summer. So that's where that stands. Uh, we have a chipper coming out of solid waste, we might see that in March. Uh, we have a five-fifty that's been in order since last November, supposedly it's sitting in a yard somewhere. Uh, we don't know where it's at. So a lot of the stuff you see might have to be encumbered for next year and possibly even the year after, don't know, that's, that's a long stretch.
Yeah, and, and just to your point with respect to the, the encumbering the funds for, um, twenty-twenty-four, um, that's, that's likely going to happen for the, the, the truck or the trucks. The, the issue is, is that in twenty-twenty-five, i- if we only get one, can we reencumber those funds or are they released back? Cause those are ARPA funds as well, so I know those have to be appropriated, which they would be, but twenty-twenty-six, they've gotta be spent down, correct?
I, I thought we could take all of our ARPA funding and put that right into the general and distribute it from there.
Yes, sir.
And then it's spent. It's free, right.
We don't have to account for it.
Well, that's correct, that's what the, you know, that's what we're using it for is for, you know, reduction in revenue.
Right.
Theoretically, we could put it into the general fund.
Well, well, it's fully fungible, so we might as well just spend it right out of the American Rescue Plan Fund.
Right.
There's no need to transfer it into the general and then spend it.
That, that's kind of what I meant though, it's, it's, the money's already, we don't have to account for any of it anymore at this point. We don't have to, we're not in danger of having.
It just has to be appropriated by twenty-six.
Correct.
We have to have it spent.
Right.
Correct.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
No, I'm sure it's not, but.
I'm just saying.
Especially since it's, it was designated because of the amount that we can use it for whatever.
Right, right.
So, okay.
But I know we can, we can extend those, those funds into twenty-four, but I don't know how to, to, if we get one truck and then the other one's still not here, if we can just extend it again or re- reencumber those funds.
Have we started?
If they have to be re-appropriated.
Have we started looking for the suck truck yet, Bob?
That has been ordered.
It's ordered.
Oh, it is ordered.
We, hopefully we'll see it at the end of summer next year.
A year from now.
Yes.
And I'm hoping it's after summer and we get our first batch for our storm sewer.
That would be great. Hey, Bob, you had mentioned, or many times that we've talked about the limitations you have with salt stores here in St. John and how that causes havoc if we get a couple of snowstorms, snowstorms back-to-back and not having or running out of salt and potentially, um, what is it, we have, how many days of salt stores do we have presently?
Again, it depends on the storm.
Right.
It's, it's hard to say, but when we order salt, so we try to stay ahead of it, they, they are allowed ten days, working days, to deliver it to us. If that doesn't happen or a certain percentage only shows up, then we can penalize them, it's like two hundred dollars a day. But that doesn't help the town when you're looking at the back of the salt barn.
Yeah.
Uh, so again, it depends on the storm.
Have we ever tarp salt, Bob? Do we have room to tarp salt?
We could make some possibly at the salt barn years ago, that's what it was, when actually it was where the public safety building is now.
Well, I was just curious if we had room enough and if you had ever tarp salt.
Yeah, back in the day.
Okay.
Uh, they frowned on it because of the runoff, there were MS four people frowning on it, even if you have it tarped.
Most of the depots around the Great Lakes, they take in their supply for the year, cause most of the salt suppliers want you to take at least eighty percent of your order, so if you haven't got space for it, they would then tarp it. And that tarping, you know, they normally took that first, of course, when a snowstorm hit.
Right.
But I was just curious if St. John had ever tarp salt.
Just back in the day, once we, you know, got away from the, the runoff and everything else and built the salt barn, but that's when the town was smaller. Uh, we've increased tenfold. Uh, we try to manage it, you know, as soon as we take, you know, one bucket out, we're ordering two.
Right.
That's right.
But again, you're dependent on them getting here, shortage of truck drivers the last couple of years, some of them won't drive if there's snow, they won't deliver it.
Right, yeah, there's, right, it'd be running out of salt when you have snowstorms is a disaster. It would be not, it'd be great to get you more salt storage, for we don't have that problem.
Yes, I do believe that Joe has been working on a, a possible location, we've looked at several. Uh, hopefully one of them will pan out and we can move forward on getting a salt barn that we could. If for today's, uh, salt, it would be fine loaded up for the winter. Uh, in the future, at least you'd still have plenty to go and you keep ordering as, as you moved on, but.
Is the barn full right now?
It is full and.
How much do we still owe, how much do they owe us or how much do we have to take from last year?
About twenty percent? I don't remember.
Yeah, we did not meet the eighty, you have to take eighty percent.
Right.
Uh, I don't know the percentage.
Are they holding it for us?
They're holding it for us until the end of December. So depending what happens in November, December, we can get some of that used up, if not, then yes, we will bring it down here cause we're not gonna pay for the rent, we will get it down to the salt barn, one of the bins and tarp it.
Okay.
Fair enough, thanks, thank you.
Anything else?
We're supposed to get lots of snow.
So my question is this whole budget process now, we've got Public Works, we've got Water District, you got Sanitary, you got Wastewater. Are you gonna be up here for all of those?
We can.
Or are we gonna do more of those all at one time or?
He can't, I mean, we, we'll go through the, the process and we'll discuss the.
Can be, but I believe Joe's got those numbers, cause it was just created, so he knows what between him and Daniel.
Utilities and stuff like the, the utilities, I, I, if you have any specific questions, I'm sure Daniel can answer those.
The question I had, if you look at this, Bob, you've got twenty-two full-time employees.
Oh, I got you, yeah.
Yes.
And when we get to Water District, now there's thirty-two full-time employees.
Right.
Which looks like now we're up to fifty-four.
Right, and I can, I can explain all that.
You got another thirty-nine full-time for Water, it's a, if we could kinda.
Staffing is apportioned for Public Works out of Water and Sanit, Water and Sanitary, Utilities and, and District and Motor Vehicle. Um, you have the Clerk Treasurer's Office where they're apportioned, a small portion out of general fund, their utility function, if they're doing a utility function, they'll, they'll be apportioned out of that. Same thing with, with my salary, Jason's salary, uh, building and planning, um, so that's why there's different numbers.
That makes sense then, okay, I was trying to figure out.
But I wanted to make sure everyone had an, an, an understanding that, that there's difference.
Right.
You know, in those numbers and that's a good catch that, that you, I know you're looking ahead, so.
Well, I just wanted to make, when you look at it, it's like, wow, have we got all these employees?
Yeah.
And what I know, when you look at the salary ordinance, you know, you've got a certain percentage out of this one, a certain percentage out of that, so I just wanted to know how that whole package looked together, so, okay, that makes sense, cause that's your office and also Beth's office, okay.
Joe thought that maybe thirty-two and a quarter employees here and twenty-seven and a half employees over there.
Okay.
Yes, that's where it gets confusing when you see that, cause other people are paid out of sewer district.
Sometimes it's hard for Bob to talk on it, because some of that stuff doesn't even apply to him.
I wish we had that many employees, but, uh.
You wish you had them employed.
That says twenty-two and we're not even there right now, but we're currently, uh, working on filling those vacancies.
So that was gonna be my next question, twenty-two full-time personnel, is that how many you have or is that how many that you were?
That's authorized.
Allocated for.
That would, that would have next year, hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Hopefully sooner.
Has it helped since we, uh, adjusted the, uh, pay schedule?
Well, we never did finish.
No, but I think with the, uh, what's going on with the economy and, and other businesses, uh, we've gotten a few more applicants that, uh, seem to be good candidates.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
So our Parks Department, um, we've got two full-time staffers, um, in our Parks Department. We've got currently a, a permanent part-timer now, um, he's asking for an additional permanent part-timer to assist in, uh, with some of the, um, minor maintenance, um, items that they have at the parks. Um, the total salaries, um, retirement, longevity, benefit costs, um, are two-hundred-fifty-nine thousand. Um, the supplies, thirty-two thousand, services and charges, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand and capital outlay of eight-sixteen-seven-twelve. So Mike's here somewhere, there he is. So, um, Mike O'Shea is here, um, again, he's been doing a fantastic job, um, with our Parks Department. I appreciate all the hard work, um, that he's been doing to make that a, a success. Um, so if you wanna kinda jump in, Mike?
Sure, yeah, yeah, thank you for the.
And just before, he's already had this presentation to, um, the Parks Board, so it's already been, um, presented, they're considering it and they'll make a recommendation, um, to the council.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thanks again, yeah, we did that on, uh, the fifth of September and then we'll bring it back, uh, next Tuesday for our, for our next meeting, but, um, but yeah, I mean, just, uh, basically on the budget, just kinda run down on some of the, the, the lines there, the, the general one is the Civic Park, uh, uh, budget more than anything else. Increase in that, basically we do with improvements for Civic Park, um, examples that we're proposing were automatic locks for the bathrooms, um, the pavilion improvements with painting and, and netting and then, uh, working on some, uh, uh, hard paths, um, to get to the ball fields, the two ball fields that are there, get to the tennis court that is there, a little more connectivity, um, accessibility and stuff, uh, kinda, you know, throughout the park. Um, but Parks and Rec, the two-two-zero-four, um, the main increase of that is, uh, what Joe had mentioned, was just a part-time uh, person, just mainly to help with, uh, uh, maintenance more than anything else. Uh, we use Public Works a lot, um, they help out, uh, a lot with, you know, garbage-wise and, and various park stuff that I asked for. Um, this person would be, um, you know, help with, you know, the garbage, pavilion rentals, um, uh, and various, I, I would say, um, smaller items that doesn't require some, you know, machinery and stuff that we would need Public Works for. Um, and then other things with the two-two-zero-four, um, budget too is just, uh, increases for, um, uh, uh, some, you know, playground repairs, uh, Laramie Park Ball Field, which we have done some improvements on it now. Um, we started stocking the ponds, um, our rec programs as well, um, you know, uh, we did more of our summer camp this year. We added a new soccer league this year that we ran, uh, for the fall and, and, and we're gonna be doing it again in the, in the, in the spring. Um, and then, uh, we have a, uh, a plan kinda laid out for what we are gonna be doing, you know, through twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the capital part, the four-six-five-one, uh, that, um, uh, the main thing that'll come out of that so far probably be Gates Park more than anything else, is that's the current project that we're, uh, we're, we're doing now, um, uh, with the walking path, uh, finishing the walking path and then, um, uh, adding hard courts, uh, pavilion with restrooms, um, over, uh, right near, near the playground end, so it should look all nice. Um, other plans with the capital items, depending on how the Gates Park works out, was, you know, we're looking at possibly, uh, uh, doing work at the Prairie West parking lot, um, walking, walking paths too is one thing I wanted to hit upon a lot. Uh, there's, Heartland Park needs a lot of repairs, um, Timberlane Park is another one that is about twenty years old, that needs some work. Um, and then we have a, kind of a priority list of some of our playgrounds that need to be, um, uh, adjusted, fixed here and there. Um, for example, Lantern View was the first one that I, you know, I had on my list, um, on, on there. So, um, community events, um, that was, that would've been everything as far as the summer concert series, uh, Easter egg hunt, uh, fishing derby, um, the Boobash, um, I think I forgot, uh, Freedom Fest too, obviously, yes, in, in there as well. Um, the Christmas events, um, uh, was increased of just adding more, um, activities. Uh, Dog Park, uh, the increase with the Dog Park basically had to do with possibly adding agility equipment, uh, uh, more Dog Park agility equipment, tree plantings, uh, tree planting actually also with the two-two-zero-four, that's another thing that we wanted to, I wanted to hit upon more about, um, tree maintenance, tree repairs, tree plantings and stuff kinda throughout, throughout some of our parks. Um, Farmer's Market, uh, we did make the move to Lake Central, which I think has been working out pretty well. Um, the, the main increase with that has to do with adding, um, some music, uh, we added live music this year. Um, and, um, that would've been, uh, a, a priority that we were looking to, to, to add for, uh, all through twenty-twenty-four. And then the gardens over at Patnall Park over at the, um, at, at the garden and that was just some, um, adding dirt, mulch, um, just minor items like that over at the Patnall Park, so.
What have you got planned for, uh, pickleball courts? I heard there were.
So, yeah, so actually, uh, we did paint pickleball lines over here at Civic Park, uh, back here.
Playing out there in the.
Yeah, they're just playing out there right now, which is kinda cool to see. Now, that still has, uh, a, a tennis net regulation, so it's not an official pickleball regulation size and stuff, but we did do lines here and like I said, there's been a few people here and there playing, which has been nice. Um, over at the Gates Park, um, that's part of the project there, we have, uh, three like hard court settings that we're, we're planning on doing, one being basketball, one being a tennis court, single tennis court, and then, um, a hard court for, uh, pickleball that would have, uh, four pickleball courts.
They're gonna be done this year?
Uh, pro, no, I would not say it, cause we're gonna start with the walking path this year, uh, first, uh, because that is the, uh, the block grant is part of that. Um, so that's, we're gonna do that first and then we're supposed to, we were going back and forth, uh, with the engineer about the, um, the bid documents even today and stuff like that, so that was gonna be first and then right after that, kinda gets bid out, gets started, the plan was to, you know, bid out that, that next phase basically, which would've been the hard courts, the three hard courts I just mentioned. And, um, uh, in a, in a, in a path connection, um, from, um, uh, it would be the north side of the park, uh, going to, I think it's Pear, Pearwood Drive, I believe is, into the subdivision over at the, uh, Gates Park, so. So, yeah, so it, it is on there, um, it should, you know, look very nice too and stuff like that once it's, uh, once it's done.
So when did you say that you were gonna have the bid docs for that project?
Uh, well, we, I'm hoping, uh, really any day for at least the walking path one first. Uh, we talked about it last at our, uh, uh, September fifth meeting with, uh, with the Park Board and our engineer was there giving a little small little presentation, so. I know because the, the block grant stuff is in, so there's certain language that needs to be in there, so I know he's been talking back with the county and, and, um, we gotta make sure we have it exactly how it's supposed to be spelled out for that, so.
For the shelter or the bathrooms and stuff like that, when do you anticipate that?
Um, well, I would say if, if, I mean, if everything goes as planned, um, you know, we start that, I would say, um, uh, the bid documents should then be ready probably, I would say in November, the engineering is done, everything's done. Now it's just a matter of getting the, you know, final touches on the actual, you know, documents and the Park Board's looked at it and, and, and been okay with it. And then the third phase would've been the pavilion, uh, bathroom, um, that would've been the last thing on there, so.
So, some of the projects you think you got listed here, the family garden, the dog park, those actually take in money? Are those reflected in these budget numbers?
Yeah, like you're talking about cash balance and all that stuff? Yes, yeah, um, same thing with the farmer, yeah, Farmer's Market, yeah, it just, that would depend on, I, I, you know, if we, if we continue like the music, for example, that would depend on, you know, how many vendors we get and make sure the cash balance, you know, works. Um, it, we are okay this year with, with the, uh, with the vendors that have twenty-twenty-three vendors basically with that particular, you know, cash balance, so. Um, so yes, um, if for some reason it's, doesn't, you know, does not work, obviously the cash isn't there and then some of those, um, proposed projects and stuff obviously would not, you know, would not roll.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for doing a good job. So our Water District and to your, to your point, Jerry, where it says supports thirty-two, it doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're fully funding thirty-two staff positions, that's why I was very careful in, in how I, I worded that on there. that's why I was very careful in how I worded that on there. So it's supporting thirty-two full-time and two part-time staff. Total salaries, retirement, longevity, benefit costs to the, the Water District is ninety-nine-thousand-six-seventy-seven, supply seventeen-thousand-six-hundred, services and charges two-thirty-one-four-hundred, capital outlay five-hundred. Their total budget for the Water District is three-fourty-nine-one-seventy-seven. As you know, the Water District is a taxing body. They also will have a, an excess levy, which we'll get into later on tonight, and Daniel can explain more on that. But any questions on the Water District? It's pretty straightforward. Okay. And that kind of brings us to the water operation and maintenance. So our total, as you know, we did not budget for utilities prior to this year. Going forward, as a best practice, we, we think it's, it's a prudent move to budget for our water and sanitary utilities.
Especially since you have eleven million dollars going through there.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of money that's going through there. So as you can see, our year-over-year change from last year's projections, we're down about one percent overall. The Water Utility supports thirty-nine full-time to part-time staff. Some of these are repeat people. The, the difference comes into your building and planning personnel that are added as opposed to, where they're not taken out of the district, they're taken out of the utility. The investment of the one-point-five million, where you see it at the very bottom where it's a system development, that is, one-point-five million, that's going to be in, in for investment purposes, so we'll see how that goes. I know it wasn't in the budget for this fiscal year, however, the, those fund balances were invested, so. But now we have it in the budget as, as, as an expense, but it's really an investment of the fun, of a fund balance.
So water operations and maintenance, is that inclusive of what we pay Sherrville for water? Does that come out of this?
Yes, it would.
It would?
Yes.
So hopefully-
Typically, and historically, we're paying between, you know, up to six-hundred-thousand dollars a year to buy water.
Right.
In fact, when we buy water from Sherrville, our net expense is costing us more than we're charging our customers, so we really need to look at that and do a thorough evaluation of that, because it doesn't make sense that we're not charging adequate money to cover our expense on that. Not that we're, the operations, we're losing money at the end of the day, but we're losing money when we're paying six-hundred thousand, so.
Right.
Ideally, when we get wells eight and nine up and running, we won't have to buy any more water. We'll be, and with the feed, the filter media changeout, we'll have a much higher capacity to provide water. We still got to continue to look for water sources and expand our capacity going into the future. I, I continue to say this, you know, even during the meetings with, with staff, is we need to build additional storage capacity, because we don't even have enough water storage for, you know, a full day. In a few hours, we would be empty.
We want it on the ground.
Well, wherever we get it, I mean, that's not my call, that's engineering and staff's decision, but we do need to take a look at expanding our storage capacity. Our well capacity provides that, but I, I just think it's always a safe rule to have, to have at least, you know, a, a good twenty-four-plus hours' worth of water storage in case everything just shuts down.
So when is, what's the ETA for getting well eight online, and we can use that water?
That's a good question. Bob, do you remember the conversations we had? Because I know we, we have to, and I just sent the council an email with respect to moving forward on the wellhouse eight and nine design. So the sooner we get that engineering started, the sooner we can get that, that process underway. So what I'm going to be asking is for the council to approve the task order to get that back up and going, because we put the brakes on that until we figured out this media change and what kind of outcome we're going to have on it, and we, we got very good positive results on that. But that's going to change the original design that was submitted by the previous engineer, so it kind of throws that out the window.
Yeah, pretty much what Joe said. Right now, the Robinson Town Engineer is working on permitting or getting permits from IDM to change our media out, which will improve our, our water supply immensely.
What, what percentage increase? Do they give you an idea?
Well, we can push four gallons a minute through the filters and be six.
Fifty percent increase, that's great.
Yeah. On, on a good day, so, you know, hopefully, you know, IDM approves what the engineers have.
Has there, has there been any, any ballpark estimates just in the general conversation as to what the timing would be on getting an actual pumping system set up? I know we've got, you know, the, the, the system in place, but I'm talking about actually getting it out of the ground and treating it so that we can get it out the door. In other words, faster filling the towers for now. I still believe we should have on-ground storage, too, but-
I think the conversations that I've had with engineering, I think we're looking at late 2024, 25.
Okay.
Realistic, realistically, it's not-
For well eight being operational.
Getting well eight up and running, and then well nine.
Late twenty-four, late, so about a year.
Well nine, we still have a lot of interconnections we have to do.
Still a lot has to go into it yet.
Yeah.
The sooner we get Alfredo a thumb on Sherrville better off.
And that is just one-point-five million dollars of development?
And Sherrville would appreciate us to get off their system as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, because they're building still, too.
Well, it's, they're, they're going full force on their supply to us, so it's, it's hurting their infrastructure, too.
Find people to let us re-beat our water. Do I understand this right, then, the one-point-five million of investment, is that associated with well eight and nine?
Not at all. That's fund balance, right.
Extra, extra money.
Daniel, you want to kind of take that real quick on the system development?
Sure, just because this is the first time we're ever budgeting these other water utility funds. Historically, we have invested certain cash balances sitting in system improvement, and I decided it was a good idea to include what the potential investment would be under this budget here that you see. And so that's just invested dollars, that's not, not going to the wells.
That's reserved.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, this is investment dollars.
Proposed investment.
It's reserved.
Okay.
It's money they didn't spend, and so they've invested.
Is what we got in, in the bank, or what?
Yeah, we got about one-point, one-point-nine, almost two million dollars in cash fund balance. We're anticipating about a million more, and we're budgeting the one-point-five just for investment.
And maybe to clarify, Councilman Aurelio, I believe the wells eight and nine portions of that cost are coming from bond proceeds, is that correct?
That's correct, so that would be coming out of the GO bond.
Yes. No, the 2021 water bond, correct, okay.
Twenty-twenty water bond. Thank you for clarifying that.
Which is part of the four-point-three million that you see on the budget. All right, so moving along, we've got our sanitary district. So this was presented to the financial advisor for the sanitary district, which is Baker Tilly. They reviewed it, they had no additional comments with respect to the sanitary district budget. The sanitary district supports thirty-two full-time, two part-time staff, total salaries, retirement, longevity, benefit costs of about eleven thousand, supplies eighteen-thousand, services and charges twenty-four-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-five dollars, and capital outlay of about two-hundred dollars. Total budget is about three-seventy-three, five-eighty-three. Pretty straightforward. Again, this is the, the taxing district of that portion of the sanitary. The utilities is to follow here. Is there any questions on this one, though?
Two hundred.
So on the wastewater operations and maintenance, this, this budget will support thirty-nine full-time and part, two part-time staff. Total salaries, retirement, longevity, and benefit costs nine-fourty-eight, four-sixty-six, total operation cost three-point-four million, total budget of five-point-eight million. Some things that have not been considered in this budget are the additional capacity that we need to work with the town of Sherrville in obtaining. We have been in discussions with them, they will be coming back to us with the price, and they were looking at the original agreement, which they're like shaking their heads, because it's like it didn't make sense to them, so they're going to be taking a look at that, and then the lawyers can go back and forth on that. But we will be looking at expanding our capacity in Sherrville, which we own thirty percent of, to forty percent is what we're, we're looking at doing. That should provide a capacity for a population of about thirty-five thousand. And that's more the, the current plan as it exists now can sustain that for, for some time. As a, as a, you know, Plan B, if you will, we've had discussions with the, the town of Crown Point, they would be interested if, if something doesn't work out with Sherrville. Not that I even anticipate that, but, you know, if the town ever were to seek an alternative source for sanitary, you know, Crown Point is definitely interested. They're, they're doing a massive expansion of their sanitary, and they're also engaged with Lake County to start providing sanitary service to some of the outlying areas, too, so.
There's no pipeline in place yet, is there, sewer line?
No, no, so that would be something-
That would have to be built.
Right, that's something that we would, you know, have to take a look at. Well, it's, nothing's cheap.
No, of course not.
Yeah. So any questions on that? Okay, great. So our other funds are public safety, that supports ten percent of the police and fire salaries and supports public safety expenses. Our CEDIT, which is our county economic development income tax fund, supports our 2016 redevelopment bond and economic development initiatives. So our riverboat fund is used to fund overall town operations. Our cable TV fund in 2024, we have three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, will assist with funding the CCMG project and support other town operations as well. Our CCD, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, assists and supports operations, services, and equipment projects, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand again is, is tied to our CCMG project as well. So as you see, to the right, where we have our maximum reserve at thirty-five percent, and then our fund balance just to the left of that, our fund balances in these funds is fairly healthy. We did not want to hit our, our public safety low-it fund as hard as we did, so we, we're taking a look at the CCD fund to kind of supplement some of those expenses that would have went to the public safety low-it. The rest of the stuff is, is pretty well self-explanatory.
Do we have the road impact fund listed anywhere here?
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I didn't, that's been quite a, quite a lucrative operation since we got it passed, what, two years ago?
Yes. So, any questions on this, gentlemen?
No.
Okay, Stormwater, so this is a new department for 2024. I just received the, the total amount for the distribution, I think there were over ten thousand parcels. We're looking at one-point, was it one-point-one?
One-point-one, yes.
Like, one-point-one in, in revenue. We, we didn't have that data until, like, literally, I think it was yesterday. So right now, the proposal is that total salaries, retirement, longevity, benefit costs to the town right now in this budget is zero. We've got seventeen-thousand-six-hundred for supplies, services and charges, which basically is your engineering expenses and, and legal expenses, and any, you know, financial assistance that the, the department needs, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, and we've got two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand for MS4 compliance. The total budget is three-ninety-two-five-hundred. This will allow a positive cash flow going into fiscal year 2025, so that way, when they start the fiscal year, they'll have funds there to work with until June comes in, and we won't be, they won't be running short, so.
It's going to be a tough first six months.
It's going to be a tough first six months for, for us, but, you know, I think that gives us enough time to get things teed up and ready to go, so that way, come June-
Yeah, Bob said last night that he would get it all lined up.
We do have thirty percent commitment from the Stormwater Board on the sewer vac truck, so those lease payments will be included in the next fiscal year's budget. They're not included in here, because we're not going to have it in 2024.
Didn't have any money.
Twenty-twenty-four, we probably will have it in 2025. But if we need to put money out later in the year and do, because you have an option when you do a lease purchase, you can do a first cash payment upfront for the first year, or you could do that first payment within a year. So we have options on that, so that's not a decision we need to make tonight. So that's the Stormwater Management Board. Here we go, Brian.
Ah, okay, I didn't-
All right.
You had a simple one.
So your road impact fee. So right now, we have a fund balance of just over two million dollars in there. The, the project that we're, we're looking at doing is the White Oak Hundred-Ninth Roundabout. Phase one engineering is, is underway on this project. Phase one engineering would be complete, and the design phase would be done in 2024. So in 2025, we would begin the construction phase of this project, which we're estimating at about two-point-five million.
That's climbed a little bit, too, hadn't it?
Yes, but there's contingency and everything else involved in that.
I totally understand, but originally, the discussion was one-point-nine to two-million.
Yeah.
So it's gone up about twenty percent.
We've got contingencies, there's, there's some right-of-way takes we have to do, so, yeah.
What's the contingency percent, you know?
He probably has it at about, I'm guessing about ten percent.
Okay, so you're looking at two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty, right?
Right, so there's, there's a healthy contingency in there.
Cover, yeah. But it's a-
So that's our road impact fee. There's other projects that are eligible for the road impact fee funds, and that's something, obviously, we'll take a look at throughout 2024. So I want to let Daniel cover and, and do a wrap on this, so you take it away.
Sure thing. All right, so this has been a culmination of roughly three months of hard work, and so I just want to commend the town manager and all the department heads for gathering to get everything well-studied and, and put together. This is a over twenty-five-plus-million-dollar operation that takes a lot of hard work and effort to really dial in, and so, as has been mentioned before, we always, we, we always budget high, so that over the next, of course, in the next couple of weeks, before the council adopts, we, we have a little bit of time to make some, you, you can ask questions if you have concerns, and so I just, Joe covered a lot of the, the detail, and so I'm not going to recap everything, trust me. I just, I wanted to just basically commend everyone and say thank you, and it's, it's, this is a good budget, and it is our recommendation that we have a balanced budget for 2024.
Nice work, guys.
Yeah, that shows a lot of detail. So thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your work in this. I think it lays out pretty easy to understand, so I appreciate that, too.
And all, all the council members, you do have the, the copies of the individual Form ones, if, if you want to go through those, if you have any questions, as Daniel was saying, we're prepared to answer any of the questions you might have. If you need to sit down with us and discuss it further, we'll, we'll be available for that as well. The next steps are listed on the presentation as well. We have our first reading, which is anticipated for the next council meeting. Prior to that, we'll have our public hearing. We've already had the Water, Water Works Board, they've approved it with the recommendation to the council to approve their utility and district budget. We'll, we'll do the same thing with the sanitary district as well, and the Parks Board will be making a recommendation. I don't know if you're going to have that mic at this meeting, I have it down for the twenty-fourth, so if- Okay, I just don't know if they had enough time to, to look at it, that's all, but if they did, and they're, they're comfortable with it, then obviously that can, that time frame can be adjusted. So to Daniel's point, you know, from September twenty-eighth to the twenty-fourth, we'll consider any adjustments that the council is looking for, if there's any support for anything else. One thing I would, you know, let, let the council know is that, you know, based on the discussions that we had, that there were no raises anticipated for the elected officials, so I just wanted to point that out. So that was the direction that we were given and moving forward with the budget, so the October twenty-fifth meeting, we'll have our second reading and adoption. At that time, we'll have the salary ordinance presented as well for first reading.
So we're anticipating a max levy?
Yes, we're going to get to that.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, because he's going to talk about the- Yeah, because he's going to talk about the levy here later on.
All right. Well, you talked about a balanced budget, so I'm wondering if we're anticipating the max levy or if those expenses that we're using that for are included in this. So we'll get to that later.
Yeah, we've got that on the agenda.
All right. Good. All right, Item B, declaratory resolution for the RDC.
So we have been discussing this matter for some time. We're wanting to move forward on this. The declaratory resolution defines the economic development area. This would be the parcels at the southwest, excuse me, southeast corner of Calumet Avenue and Hundred and First Avenue. This project is about twenty-seven million dollars in mixed use, commercial and residential. This is the first mixed use development that the town of St. John has had. So it's, we're definitely liking everything that we're seeing so far with that. We're working with legal and our financial advisors on the development agreement, which will be before the council at some date, but Dave, if you want to kind of hit any of the finer points on that.
You pretty much hit them all. This is, as we talked at the last council meeting, this document starts the process of setting up the allocation area, which regardless of whether you ultimately come to a final agreement on the development agreement, you know, in the next month or two, or it happens in January, it's something you're going to want set up this year. So the direction of the council at the time was, all right, let's get the allocation area set up. In congi, normally you would do a development agreement first before you started this process, but in light of kind of the advantages of getting the allocation area set up, you guys directed us to start that, get that rolling kind of concurrently with the development agreement and in tandem, and if this goes first, that's fine. But the big advantage was to set the base, which to do that, you had to have the allocation area done this year.
Right, otherwise we lose the.
You lose the whole.
You lose the year, right.
Because there's a whole year of increment.
That's right, so that's what, what you have in front of you is the process of the allocation area so that you don't lose the increment for the year, which is, you know, it's going in tandem with a development agreement, but that's not what this is yet. Hopefully you'll see that very shortly as well.
Yeah, yeah. And this will be before the RDC, not the town council, but we wanted to discuss it at this level so that way you guys were aware of this. This will also be sent to the individual member who's obviously not here today. We'll make sure that she gets a copy of this so she has eyes on it before the meeting.
That's great.
Yeah, so you have a number of steps loosely. It's declaratory resolution, it goes to the council, the plan commission winds up back before the RDC.
For a final.
For a final confirming resolution. So because of all those steps, you really needed to get this thing started now.
And we're on a very tight schedule.
Any hiccup would cause problems.
Financially.
Well, you could theoretically lose the advantage that you're trying to gain.
Right, understood.
So.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, move on to C. Fire Department surplus, scuba and bottles.
So I. So I sent a memo to you guys, hopefully you have that in front of you, but this is about our old SCBA bottles. Long story short, we got them in two thousand, we got new, we were fortunate to get a grant in two thousand twenty-one for new bottles, we got those in service just a month and a half ago. They're in service, we received the grant, we're paying, FEMA paid us, so we're paying the vendor. Our old bottles, they're surplus. I'm hoping you guys can clear them surplus. There's organizations called Heart and Motion, is one of the bigger ones, but there's also been local departments that have connections to Guatemala and they take the old packs and go to Guatemala. We can no longer use them, I can't give them to other departments because of the standards in the US. Kind of the reason why we went and got new packs in the first place, but.
It's pretty sad that other countries will take them, isn't it?
It is.
I was just going to say.
It's a testament to our standards here in the United States.
Is there a big demand for this stuff around the world?
There is a lot of demand, so I wish there was an avenue that we could give to less fortunate departments in Indiana and even in the country.
No, I was just thinking if there was any charitable setup.
There are charitable organizations, but they tend to go out of the country.
Okay.
For that, because of the standards.
Well, and it also depends if they have nothing, this is a solid step up from nothing, right?
Yeah, I agree, so like I would, like I said in my letter, I think it's a liability to go to XYZ, Indiana, they may not have them because we're, we're getting new packs because they're not in standard, they meet the OSHA and the NFPA regulations, and then now we give it to someone else. I don't want a liability issue on the town, so.
Something, something in a foreign country is better than nothing.
Yeah, kind of like you guys said, it's silly, silly is the word that I'm going to use, that they're serviceable, but we can't give them to less fortunate people in our area.
So Dave, in order to dispose of these, then we could, a simple motion would be required? We don't need to do a whole resolution, do we?
You should do a resolution, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Resolution declaring the surplus?
Yeah, it shouldn't, it doesn't have to be elaborate.
Right, right.
But in a resolution.
Okay, I'll run that through you real quick, but I know I thought we did one before, so that's not.
I know you, I know you have.
I was like, I remember doing one, but I'm like, when was that?
Thank you guys on that.
Yeah.
So I'm up next, I think?
Yeah.
All right, so my, our next thing I'm really excited to talk about and I promise it will be a fraction of what I normally talk to you guys on and the budget meeting. So I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about community paramedicine and mobile integrated health. It's been one of the biggest passions I've been involved in with the fire department. It will be reusing our services that we already offer to the fullest to our citizens. So I kind of want to give a brief presentation of what this is, why we want to do it. And what I'm looking for ultimately on the next council meeting is permission to use Attorney Westlin and other attorneys, so Westlin will be hopefully representing the town, but we're going to enter partnerships with either Community Healthcare, Methodist Healthcare or Franciscan to help cover some of the costs for this. But we'll talk about that immensely in the grant. But again, this has been a five-year process that I've been looking for. It will give us an opportunity to help people in the community and also backfill a full-time employee at zero cost. With that, I'd like to thank all the people that helped us real quick. Captain Sharp, who's going to talk, Zach Stribec, who's also here, Deputy Chief Gillette. Again, this is not only a passion, it's really become an obsession of mine, so I'm excited for him to talk to you about it. So I'll throw it over to Mike real quick and Zach, and then I'll wrap up.
Again, just to reiterate, thank you, thank you for your time today. I got to use glasses now, so thanks for the big TV. As you said, this has been five years that we've been working. Yes, all right. Over and over, got it. I got it, that way I can not hit you. It's been a passion of ours for the last five years, we've been working on it, trying to figure out not only how it would help. There we go. Not only will it help our community, our call volume, our future aging in place membership. So right now, like I said, it's going to be throughout the thing, it'll be talked about as CPMIH, which is Community Paramedicine or Mobile Integrated Health. Currently, as our EMS structure is, emergency medical services structure is, is that you call nine-one-one, we show up, we treat your immediate symptoms, side symptoms, and we transport you to the hospital. Right then, our interaction's over, we're done, we go back to the station, wait for you to call us again or for somebody else to call us. We've noticed, especially with COVID, some of the things that's come out just a little bit more to light is, right now, the healthcare system punishes hospitals when their patients and for their readmission rates. This means that if a patient's discharged, it's readmitted within thirty, sixty or ninety days, it depends on the readmission category, it results in a fine to the hospital. Some of those fines are three percent of what the last two years Medicaid reimbursement could be. We're talking a lot of money for the hospital systems. Our part of the problem is, we're called back to take care of someone that for a simple prob, sometimes a simple problem that could have been dealt with at home, medication issues, reaction to the medications, fire, life safety, or just education on what's going on. We'll talk more about when you go to the hospital, that you're diagnosed with something and have a nice day. You talk to your doctor. Well, you get to the doctor, you can't get sometimes to the doctor two, three, four weeks and you're just adjusting to this new diagnosis. One of the things that we have, it's potential reduction with contracted write-offs. You know, we don't get those fines, but some of those Medicaid's not going to pay if we're just continuously going back and forth. We're going to have Kevin.
Those are write-offs, remember we, you, bi-yearly, our Medicaid and Medicare contractual write-offs, we come up saying that our bad debt we can't collect, this will directly affect that. So if we're going back to Mrs. X, who has a diagnosis of COPD, and we go there and we take her to the hospital again, Medicaid's not going to pay us for sure because it's a readmission. But now if we send our mobile integrated paramedic there who helps her with her COPD medication, talk to her about COPD, help her get those follow-up visits, help her, anything she needs really, that will help us, the initials write-offs is what we're talking about there. So we'll come over to that too, but thank you.
And all of that, all of that that's happening, none of it creates a connection that engages, you know, primary caregivers, your families, your doctors, your actual patients themselves. Nothing engages them to keep talking community-wise. As we know, some of our current problems, as the volume of our members that are aging in place, aging at home, and the amount of new growth that we continue to see everywhere. It's not just a local problem, I don't want to hit that this is just a local problem, this is everywhere. We've been to multiple agencies to see this. Our call volume will steadily increase. They use, patients use the nine-one-one system and the emergency department as a way to solve their immediate need for help. The interaction is based solely on the current emergency with no process to engage for long-term solutions. And further follow-up cares and care, follow-up and care plans are left to the patient. It's up to them to pursue it, make those doctor's appointments. Quick example, community member goes, calls for a medical emergency, we arrive, we treat, we transport, we get them to the emergency room. They're admitted and diagnosed with a long-term illness, COPD, CHF. COPD, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or CHF is congestive heart failure. That's a lot in this region, meaning all of Northwest Indiana. They're discharged, they're given a list of medications and a follow-up sheet with multiple offices. We're talking general practitioners, we're talking respiratory therapist, we're talking cardiologist, pulmonologist. It just, here's a list, here's a list with all your meds, you're supposed to feel better, here's the doctors you got to call. What actually happens in real scenarios is they take the medication, they start to have some of the listed side effects. And none of them have been explained to them, so they call nine-one-one for the medication problem. You know, none of these are beating up on anybody, but if you look at the emergency rooms, especially during COVID, especially now, you're not getting a good explanation from the nurses and doctors. It's, hey, I got to get you out because I have more patients to see. So there's not a lot of time for them to explain that medication. They're not familiar with a list of doctors, so no attempt is made to follow up. They continue to get sicker, so they call nine-one-one for the not getting better. Since no follow-up appointment is made, they run out of their medications. Now they call nine-one-one to go to the hospital to have the emergency room doctor refill their medications. And even though the select few who are calling and making the appointments, it's two, three, four, five weeks out. They don't, some of them don't explain how rough it is on them. They, okay, well, they told me two weeks, they told me four weeks. Well, the community paramedicine could actually advocate for that patient to get in faster. So how do we effect change? Most important right now, these are kind of flip-flop right now, is we're reactive. We wait for someone to call us, every department does. We want to be proactive, which means we want to get out in the community, we want to work with our community members to encourage better health, better health in patients, better health in our community. So what do we want to do? We want to create the St. John Fire Department's Community Paramedicine and Mobile Integrated Health. We want to start being proactive, we want to do that, start doing that as soon as possible. So how do we do it? And the functionality part is creation of a program that allows for home visitors to monitor our community's health and access healthcare, access to healthcare, achieved by using mobile resources in a coordinated manner with physicians, hospitals and other specialty providers. That's those we're resourcing and to get them in and talk to them and make those appointments as needed. Use our current medical system and resource to provide a higher quality of patient-family centered care to prevent emergencies before they occur. So we're talking about community risk reduction, we're talking about fire and life safety. We want to get to those patients to take the time to explain their medications, what you're going to feel, when you should take it, should you take it with food, should you take it without, should you take it in the morning, should you take it in the evening? By the way, this one's going to make you feel like it's hard to swallow sometimes. You should take this with eight ounces of water, those type of things. They're really not getting until two in the morning when they don't feel it and then they call nine-one-one, we come out and explain it to them then. But we do a brief explanation and take them to the hospital, so we're kind of repeating the cycle. Excuse me. We also want to help foster the idea that any patient can feel safe, confident and part of maintaining the ability to age in place at home with the help of our paramedics. So instead of calling nine-one-one, we want to continuously, they have an opportunity to call us at any time. We can come out and just have a conversation with them, explain their medicine, explain their questions, get their questions answered now instead of three or four weeks out in advance or post. Your mobile integrated health, community paramedicine programs that we've been to and we kind of researched have shown a fifty percent decrease in emergency department, emergency room visits. Some of them are even more than that. So it's definitely, a lot of it is education, we focus a lot on our department on education. So we want to engage in our community to view trends in medical and safety-related incidents, which will allow us to adjust the goals of our department. If we're starting to see some trending activities, smoke detectors, COs, things that we typically do once a year, once a week, every fire department does, or we're starting to see a lot of trip and falls. We're starting to see that a lot of cold, flu-related, and it has to do with something we could fix, you know, food, water, shelter type things. Make adjustments that result in less transports to the emergency room by making sure the patient's treatment plan has been followed and updated. Not only work with the patient, but work with the doctors, work with the family members to understand what their goals are. We're not going to make them have goals, we're going to work with them to see what their goals are. Are their goals to walk again, are their goals to get out into the public, are their goals to get back to church, get back to school? What can we do to help them? Whoop, let's skip that one, I basically said the same thing. Assist our patients in making and attending follow-up appointments to be part of their own care plan. Some of the big problems, you have four weeks out, the doctor's appointment, they forget. You know, we want to have reminder calls, we'll be seeing them once a week. In ninety, first ninety days, we enroll somebody, we'll be seeing them once a week and contacting them on the phone.
So what, if I can ask a question with respect to that?
Sure.
Would this be more geared toward residents who are single, more that are on Medicare, older?
I, what? Everyone, honestly, everyone, think about the.
I mean, if my daughter went and went by ambulance, she broke her leg. I mean, is that something you would follow up with her or how would that work if you could kind of?
Well, there's different programs, so yes, we could follow up her. This is a lot of social work, that's what we do already, already as it is as a firefighter. Sorry, Jason, we do a lot of social work as it already is as a firefighter. We're the only profession, and I'm taking some of my thunder later lately, or later, that are invited into someone's house on the worst day of their life. Like we're, statistic, firefighter is the most trusted profession. You're going to invite me into your house if something's going on, no matter what you look like, right? So we're in there, we're going to be the ones following up on it. So yeah, there's different programs for different things. When we submitted our application, we picked, I think, twelve out of the fifteen that we already do. This is stuff that we already do. So yes, you're, it's not call your daughter, someone we know fell, broke their ankle. We could follow up with them. Instead of them calling the ambulance, now what, we have an ambulance out helping them because they fell and need, let's say, they're coming from the hospital, need to get back into the house. We go do that, we do that anyway, we'll still do that, but have our community paramedic do that. So our ambulance could stay in service and help someone that's having an acute emergency. Does that kind of help, Zach, I'm sorry?
I didn't mean to derail, I just.
No, I'll go one better because it kind of goes into what the actual program is, is why did you, why did that person fall? Was it a trip and fall hazard?
You're more or less behaving, and I'm taking this generally, you're acting as a nurse practitioner without being a nurse practitioner.
So what we're really acting at is we're acting as that liaison between the patient and the doctor.
I just didn't know what word to pick.
Right, so we're trying.
He brought up the social worker.
Yeah, so we're trying to bridge that and help the patient understand what their needs are, what they need to do to get better, and letting the doctor know, hey, this is what we're seeing, this is what we think.
Now, are you, are you basically going, you just have, let's say, a fire department vehicle instead of an ambulance, you don't go out in an ambulance and do it?
Right, it would be, it would be one person because we want to create that one-on-one trust.
No, no, I understand that.
It would be one person in a separate vehicle, not an ambulance.
As far as transport, you got, go to this house, you know, and you get a call, can you come tell me about this or that?
Yep.
That's, I was just curious.
And it would be scheduled.
You're not engaging the vehicle, you're going to engage a separate, in other words.
It'd be a support vehicle.
Yeah, that's what I say, one, right, one of them vehicles sitting around, okay.
To go back to that, what we would want to find out is why, why that person fell. Was it a trip and fall hazard? Was it a trip and fall hazard? Was it actually a response to medication that they're getting dizzy 25, 30 minutes after they take it? You know, now we can adjust that with them and explain that to them. Is it just a gait issue where they're, they're just wobbly? You know, maybe they're 20 or maybe they're 60, we don't know, but actually getting there and finding out the root of the problem so it doesn't happen again is a big goal of it.
Maybe they have to sit for 15 minutes before, after they eat or something.
Exactly. Or maybe should have some toast with it or something like that.
So if you can reduce our emergency delivery calls to the hospital by 50%, that's going to give you time to do this. But when you do take somebody to the hospital, what's that timeframe? How long are you usually tied up? If you get a call and you need to take me to the hospital because COPD or, or one of the, or an event, how long does that tie you up? Two guys, right?
Yeah, two guys, you're, you're, two guys with, with the ambulance that's now out of service, so you don't have one here. You're looking at potentially of two hours.
By the time you get back, clean it up.
Clean it up, restock everything, get everything, do your report. Someone, if it's a difficult call, it could be two and a half, Kevin probably has it better.
I budget, I budget two hours, man hours per call. And that includes reports, restocking. Now, that, that varies again, so if we're going to Munster community at 5:00 PM, we get there fast because we have the out the comm, the lights change, but coming home's different. Franciscan Crown Point is moving a little bit further away from us. We'll still offer Franciscan Crown Point, but that may be a little bit longer of a trip. You know, everyone, healthcare's in America is interesting too, because you have your preferred system you go to. So if I talk to someone about South Lake Methodist or, or Franciscan Dyer, Franciscan Munster, Munster community, we're blessed that we're in the middle of all that. We could take people there. We do our best to accommodate our patients, but that factors into your time.
So, so two hours is
Two hours is what I budget man hours.
Well, I'm just curious, is all you're going to be doing in reality is engaging them as being busy instead of sitting around the firehouse waiting for a call?
Yeah.
Sure, you have work to do at the firehouse, but when you're done and you're not engaged, this is something you could do and go see patient A, patient B, patient C.
Ideally, our, our, our hope to ask, we could kind of hurry up a little bit on this. I know you guys are very long, we have another meeting, or you guys have other things in the meeting, but our, our goal is to have a full time employee do this.
Oh, okay. Well, that was, what was I leading up to is are you going to need a body that's going to accomplish this?
Supplemental of part time, so Zach is, if, say Mike's the community paramedic, and he needs to see Mrs. Smith, and he is on vacation, or he's sick himself. Zach, here's Mrs. Smith's file and go there.
Well, I was just curious, it'd be something that you could use part time people for.
Absolutely.
And therefore, if you got nothing to do today, don't bother coming in.
Correct.
Okay.
And a lot of this would be funded from the other providers.
Yep.
Yeah. And we'd save our write offs too, from Medicare. Good idea, guys.
Thank you. Maybe? Okay.
Is this something that's been more or less put into place by other communities or is it something new?
I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. Kind of put that on us.
So how do we achieve it? It's just like we talked about, it's a patient visiting program to assist in the overall goal of helping our citizens become happier, healthier and safer at home, in place. Increase the access to quality follow up care for our citizens after a medical emergency. Explain more to them, educate them more on what's going on, what they're diagnosed with, what can we do to prevent an emergency later? What their medications are, things like that. It's designed to help our citizens stay in their homes longer where they work so hard to be. Nobody wants to retire two years later just because of a medical problem, end up in a, a treatment facility or a care facility. They want to be at home, you want to be comfortable. Our education's based on the actual injury, illness, discharge from the hospital, and the individual person. So that's where it comes back to the one person, not exactly one person, being kind of the liaison, is we want to know more about them and how is that going to, that new diagnosis going to affect them? Reduce readmissions for specific injury, illness when 911 and the emergency rooms are used for follow up instead of using primary doctors. We want to get these people connected with doctors right away, get them with someone who's going to be their person. So when they have a question, everybody, most people has a doc, they have a doctor they can call.
That's why it's so difficult to get in emergency rooms now because everybody's there for their daily care.
Exactly. And that comes back to what we said earlier about they're using the 911 system to get there, to get in faster, to talk to the doctor, to be sent home with your meds.
Exactly, yeah. Of course, at today's, today's rate, you're in an emergency room for five hours waiting to get waited on anyway.
Now, and, and imagine being just, just deathly sick and you're still waiting. You might be in a back room, but the, the doctor's with four, five, 15 other patients, you know?
Yeah.
So what it actually does, what our community paramedic and our mobile integrated health does, it keeps the patient and family engaged in the care and treatment plans and allows for their questions and concerns to be addressed onsite. So you're going to know, that patient's going to know when our next appointment is. If their daughter, their son, their mother, their father, or anybody else has questions, they can show up at that appointment. They can be there and ask those questions so we can get those answered. If we don't know them, we have the ability, again, since COVID, to do telehealth visits, where we can schedule the doctor to call. So we can actually get the doctor on the phone, work with them and see what the problem is, answer their question.
Kevin, is this chargeable under the program?
Not 100% yet. So, so ultimately, where I'm going to come in and try to close this is how we do this, right? Because you guys are, you're managing the money, how, what do I need, right? The hospital, it helps the hospital, so the hospital goes through a partnership with us and covers 100% of the FTE.
Oh.
I'm not just talking about a salary, I want, I want them to cover their, their, their insurance, all their benefits. Take, again, I'm picking on Mike because he's right in front of me, or Zach, take him, he's still employed by St. John's Fire, but I want hospital XYZ to pay for him. Because he's, he's ultimately helping none, because they're getting upwards of $3 million, $4 million in fines a year for these readmissions.
And he gets paid less than a doctor.
And, and we're, we're budgeted. That's the other cool thing about us. Our scope is so big, we're patient centered and we, we're autonomous, okay? So they're going to pick on me, but nursing, nursing is, we, we get paid better as nurses, okay? But we're not as autonomous. Our skill set's a little different. As a medic, we're paid a little less, but we're more autonomous. So we could do things in the home that a, that a nurse ultimately can. So this isn't home healthcare, it's a little different. So we get that question a lot, why aren't you just using home healthcare, why aren't you using nurse? A little different. This is patient centered, just like nursing, but we're trying to help our people inside our community. So, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I promise you, you have 10 more minutes, we'll be done.
Yeah.
Sure, your 10 minutes, Kevin's everybody's hour.
I'm glad all my friends are here.
So a lot of it is
They still hate you.
So a lot of it is access to the, access to in home care that is part of the treatment plan versus the emergency room. If, if the patient's having a question on a medication, add, change, increase or decrease, it's something we want to ask at home. What we don't want to do is have that person sitting up 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, 2 o'clock in the morning, trying to figure out why they don't feel good. So they call 911, they go to the hospital, 8 o'clock in the morning, 9 o'clock in the morning, they might see the doctor, they might get admitted, and then they go, or they go right back home. And then two days later, they're calling again. So it's more of the education of what their disease process is at home. We talked about, it's already trusted for the fire department to engage with our community members and help address the current and future needs that's a guide to our treatment goals. We can watch for trends. You know, we can watch for trends, not only on the, the education side of this, but we can see trends in the fire department. You know, Zach, here's one of our big guys on community risk reduction where we're talking fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, CO detectors, life rotation devices, I mess that word up all the time. But there's other things we can see trending in our neighborhood that right now, just that everybody at the station, waiting for calls, doing training, our own education for being the fire department and medical, we don't have a lot of time to worry, I won't say worry, but look at the trending and see what's happening in, in the neighborhood. If I don't have any patients for the next two hours, I can go up and run a report and see what the last 10 calls were. So we can see what our, our goals in the future are. Main goal is reduce trips to the emergency room in exchange for primary care appointments. We want to get them to the doctor, doctor knows them best. You know, we want to kind of revert back to the, I won't say years, but I'll say the old days where your doctor knew your name, you knew your doctor's name. When you called him, he said, okay, I'll call you right back. And you, you knew he was going to call you right back. He was going, or she was going to call you, not a nurse or somebody outsourced. Assist our most vulnerable community members to overcome medical hurdles. Goes back to that where they don't know who to call. You know, if we go back to the example, giving them someone who calls and breaks their ankle, if that person is of a, of a higher age, let's say that higher age, the doctors that they know may not be, you know, when they had their broken hip 20 years ago or something, they may not be in service anymore. So they don't know who to call, they won't, they probably won't call at all. So getting them hooked in with that doctor. You got plenty. So our added benefits, so our added benefits, you're going to see, we, we're going to do at each visit, we're going to do a home safety survey, a general wellness survey, fall prevention, precise, the exact disease education, what's going on with that personal patient. Trending medical care, we're going to look for increases in blood pressure, they may not be on blood pressure medicine. Community engagement to aid in the prevention of medical, fire and safety related emergencies. Just because we're there to talk about a broken hip, doesn't mean we can't talk about the beeping smoke detector, the rugs, the soft socks that they're using that, that makes them slip and fall. Here's some of those, the surveys, the fall risk, you'll see is have you fallen in the past? Do you take any medicines that create any dizziness? Do you take any medicines that, four or more prescribed medicine? What's their effect on balance and coordination? Sturdy hand grips? When we look at our general wellness study, this one kind of goes more in depth of the general wellness of the patient. Not only is there, is it their disease process, but their physical health, their social health? Did they suddenly, because they got sick, stop going to social events, church, weddings, friend's house, you know, family's house? And what, what we can do and what are the resources that we have in the county? I go on a famous tangent that we are resource rich in this county, we're just horrible at giving those resources out. If we can use these kind of programs to get them in touch with those resources, maybe we can get them back into church, back into the family life. Partners. Partners are our local hospitals, our local primary care physicians, our specialty doctors. Go back to what we talked about, the, the orthopedics, the cardiologists, our respiratory therapists, our pulmonologists. These are patients, these are doctors and facilities that we want to work with to get them their patients, so they can see those patients locally. We want to work with our local doctors, we don't want to have someone here who's doctors in Chicago. And now you're talking a whole different beast when they're crossing state line to get up to another, that's way overpopulated, just like everywhere else is. So example of a member of visit, first thing that's going to happen is they're going to get referred to us. Somehow, some way, they're going to get referred to us. We're going to actually look at what, at their chart, we're looking at having access to the actual medical chart from the hospital as well as our transport chart, finding out what their diagnosis was, work on education that we can provide to them. When we get to the house, we're going to look at a general wellness score pre and post, and then we're going to decide how long this patient needs to be with us. Is it a 30, 60 or 90 day visit plan? We're going to do the fall risk, the home safety check, we're going to check their, their medications. What are they on? Why are they taking them? Are they taking two of the same because it's two different doctors? Is one, we had a class earlier, and if you're giving one for a narcotic and one's a benzo for pain, what is that going to create in the patient? Nausea, dizziness, could be fall risk. There's simple things, there's wound care, blood pressure assessment, sometimes we just get called because they need a bandage change. We've transported people to the hospital for a bandage change. Blood pressure assessment, also education to watch how we trend. There is a slip in here for blood, how to, show them how to do a blood pressure tracker, when to take it, how to take it. And we can update those every week when we go see them to see if they're increasing or decreasing. Dietary needs. Famous question, are you eating? When's the last time you ate? What'd you eat? Are they getting food or medicine? Do they have enough money for food and medicine? If not, what can we do to, to create them a situation where they can get both? Communication with their primary care physician and their family, as well as themselves to create their goals. With that, we're going to develop a care plan, then we do patient engagement assessment. What that is, is that goes back to the, the life safety, home safety, general wellness is what can we do to get you to your doctors, your family, everyone involved to get you better? Because sometimes it's not just the medical part of it, it's just those, they're so scared, nervous, that they're not going to any fun, family functions. They're kind of isolating themselves, which makes their condition worse. After that, we're going to engage the medical community and find out which one of our community's resources are available. Is it just another, a good social worker that has some psychological background that can help them? And then before we leave, every day, we're going to check and see if any of their discharge papers or any of our schedule, our follow up appointments that they have, when they are, do we need to call them before, do they need a ride, do they have a ride? Do they have transportation? Is family going to go with them? Would they like it, if it's available for an e-visit? Would they like one of us to, to listen in? You know, there's a lot of things we can do, just right before we leave. The big question is how will we get there? And at this point, your famous Kevin will come talk for
So, so I'll, I'll be as brief as I possibly can. Again, we have the honor being firefighters. I have already said that people invite us into their home on the worst day of their life, at the worst time, they don't care what's going on, they don't care what they're wearing, anything. We're there, we already have that relationship with the community, okay? These guys are fairly educated. We're, we're educated very well in what we're doing. We're already trusted members of the community, we have it in for them. What we're not doing very well is why aren't we using that relationship that we have with our community members and going in times where they're not having the worst day of their life and helping these people? We have people that call us because they just want to talk to people. And I like to talk, so they could call me all the time, right Brian? So our goal right now is to start this program on January 1st. The reason why this is important now is we're in the budget season, but we're also, after we do the budget season, we're going to have to do a payroll ordinance and other things. So I want this to be on the forefront for you guys, okay? My goal is to start January, one, one full time community paramedic. This likely person will be Captain Sharp here, he will be assigned to the day shift or a flex shift. He will work a 40 hour or more, more than likely, non traditional shift. His goal will be, be following up with these patients, going to these people's houses, seeing if they need help. What can we do to help them, working with them and helping accommodate those appointments? Mike will come off his current shift to accomplish this. Mike will come off his current shift to accomplish this. The community paramedic will use a current staff vehicle that we already have. I've already one step ahead, there's a grant for a vehicle that I'm trying for, that's a zero-match grant from the town, so if I could get that, that's great. So if we get another vehicle, zero cost to the town, I'm all for it, okay? This will allow Mike to function as a paramedic as well, so he's out at Mrs. Smith's house or Ox's house, and we get a call down the road for a fire or a heart attack. He's closer because he's already mobile, just like our police department is. So that's another added benefit that we have. Again, we have been beyond fortunate to have partners and pioneers in mobile integrated health throughout the United States, are here to in Indiana, we've been able to shadow in Crawfordsville and Monticello, and like they said, it's going on these calls, going to these appointments and talking to people, talking to people and telling them what their medications do, trying to stop those synergistic effects of medications, help them get to appointments. Listen, if I have to help you get to an appointment, we will do that. That's what we should do for our citizens in St. John. We should be able to do that. And not take any ambulance out of service to do it, right? Have a person that's dedicated to that, be a social worker, be a repository for all those services. So we've developed some primary partners, and most primary partners are the hospitals we have in our area. Like I said, we're uniquely positioned, we have one that's really, really interested, they wanna get a community paramedic program or paramedic program in north of San Antonio, and they haven't been able to do it. We're here, we're waving our flag, we're here, we're willing to do it, okay? We're danger close to the point where-
And they would fully fund that, correct?
They would fully fund the FTE, to a point where they're trying to talk to me about legal stuff, and that's where I need permission to talk about it, that's why I'm here.
I would imagine it would be very similar to like an SRO kind of scenario, I would think. I mean, I don't-
Analogous.
Yeah.
As long as I have someone that's a professional to do that, then I'll just do what I'm told. But that's where I'm looking for permission for, under the guise of this. But again, we have three large systems that we could bump this. Like I said, we take people to wherever hospital they can, if it's appropriate. So once we sign on one hospital, the other ones are gonna be like, what the heck, why don't you come with us? We will be able to expand, there's a need for it, there is a lot, a lot of state funding. Our applications into the state, we've already got preliminary approval, it'll be approved on October 13th, that will have our mobile integrated health license, that says, we're already doing it, now we'll be able to do it officially. No cost again to the town. Once we get that, and it's opened up avenues of funding, there's a $50,000 to $75,000 state grant we could get annually, just for community paramedicine. Brian asks, is anyone else around here doing this? No. We will be the first municipal-based fire EMS to do that. Again, does that mean anything? No, but it's a feather in our cap that we're being the forefront of helping people. I think that's a good thing for the town of St. John.
But it's a good thing for not only us, St. John, but the community.
The community, it's good for the people we serve, and that's why we're here. So additionally, we're applying through a grant with the local Department of Health, they got a lot of money for just this. We're uniquely positioned to do things like that. During COVID, we had members that worked for an area hospital that gave immunizations, we could do that. A lot of their funding mechanisms that they need to hit, this program hits. So we're asking for a large sum of money from them to also supplement and fund, so if we need to have, not that we need, we'll have maintenance on the vehicle, we'll have other things, fuel. That may not be covered by our community partners, but these grants will cover that. We have the equipment we need for the most part, some equipment we will have to get, but these grants will cover it. My goal is there'll be zero additional cost to the town to offer this. And we'll be offering this, and then still backfilling Mike's position, because we have that full-time FTE already built into the budget. That's really my goal. I don't need to read everything verbatim.
Well-
Again-
So it sounds like a wonderful plan, you know, it does, it sounds very useful, it sounds like it's needed, maybe the only, and I'm sure you've thought of this before, I'm sure, when I'm gonna mention, you've already thought through and probably are all gonna do this. I was just asked that you have some metrics, you have some, you know, metrics that this can be measured, the effectiveness, that, you know, this penalty that we get, that we can, you know, have some type of, you know, formula that you know at the end of the year, you know, and you can take a look how you're doing. So consider how you're gonna be able to measure this system and how effective it is, and I'm sure you already thought about it.
So this is 100% data-driven?
And plus what it costs-
For you to see the data.
-versus losing our Medicare write-off. In other words, you don't get paid for going back, you don't get paid a second trip.
So ultimately, that fine for the hospital is the big thing, that's why they're willing to pay for a full-time FTE.
No, 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 we understand the cost savings and the time savings, which are key for both your department and the hospital, but the patient benefits, the town is providing the service, you gentlemen are providing the service, and yet it's not costing the taxpayers or the town itself.
And so to finish with your question, Brian, we're gonna, this is all data-driven. So Mike kinda alluded to it, we will get access to the hospital chart, and we'll chart there, and they're 100% made metrics and data-driven, so are we. So after the first, after the first three months, we will have data that we will be able to report. We're so confident that it is, it works, because the state's putting so much money behind it, our other partners that have done it, that-
It sounds very sensible.
Yes, it does.
And also with the trending, to bounce off what you were saying, with the trending, being able to tap into their actual hospital charts, we can see, before we started this program, patient A, they were at the hospital 15 times into 2022. Since we've started the program, in the last three months, they've been in once, or they've been in, you know, we can see that, as well as the cost savings, we can see that, hey. So then again, when he talks about growing, when we grow next year, the year after, we can now take those numbers to the hospital and say, well, look what we've done for your patients.
And also for improvement's sake, you're gonna learn things along the way, and you'll be able to look at that data and improve that service.
But ultimately, it's gonna save us too, so instead of going to Mrs. X's house seven times for the same thing and not getting paid for it, we'll be able to send Mike now. And he could go, hey, we've been there twice in the last two days, please follow up with her. Obviously, there's a bridge gap there or something. So it is very doable, but what I'm looking for ultimately, unless you have any more questions, is permission on the 27th to take that next step, to enter negotiations and work on those partnerships with these hospitals. Because that's where we're at, and I can't do that without approval from the council. So, any other questions on this?
Thank you.
Again-
That's great, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Mike, Zach, Kevin, thanks.
Okay. Item E, building and planning department solution.
So this matter's been before the town council, and it's here again this evening. John Gill, our interim director, is here this evening to answer any questions that you might have on this solution.
Hey, John.
Hi.
John.
So briefly explain why you need a new software system, what that the one you currently have doesn't do.
So, back almost a year ago now, when the former building and planning director was told to ask his department what we needed for, from the ARPA funds, we all unanimously said a software upgrade. And so then in February, March of this year, we demoed with three companies, and we kinda ranked them unanimously, again, with the department staff, and Central Square was the one that was kinda out in front, after we looked at all of them for ease of use, and we kinda thought of it as the part-time electrical inspectors and stuff, it's kinda more user-friendly to go out, do an inspection with an iPad versus pen and paper, like we're doing currently with carbon copy paper, where you leave the white copy on-site, and you bring the yellow copy back for your records. And I believe Jason, the former building and planning director, went out and got bids and whatnot, and kinda brought it before the council, and we didn't really hear a whole lot, and it kinda went away for a while, and now it kinda came back, but now after watching the last council meeting and stuff, I don't really know if we feel comfortable pursuing it as the building and planning department with kinda some of the comments that were made at the last meeting and stuff. And what we did learn on those three-hour demos back in February and March was that it's a one-year rollout from the time you commit to the time you have a fully functional tablet or device where you can go out and do an inspection. So that's, in my mind, that's a year of, you know, Zoom meetings and conference calls and emailing back and forth and giving all your data from the unique data of the town of St. John, the inspections we do, the permits we do, you know, the things we look for on inspections, that, you know, how, what we need from contractors to register, what we need from businesses to register, and they take all that and they build the software around that. So that's a year of everybody in building and planning's career tied up just to get it implemented, and if it's gonna be a two-year contract or something short like that, or if it's even shorter-lived than that, I just don't think the juice is worth the squeeze at this point to kinda try to get something going with three months left in the year when it might not be a long-term solution. And I know I speak for everybody in the department, that if we're gonna dedicate a year of still doing our regular job, but then also giving a software company information on how to build software for us, I think all of us across the board would like to see a, you know, five, 10, 15-year outlook for the outlay of effort that we would go through to, you know, kinda assist whatever software company it may be in building that software that we would use.
That certainly makes sense.
And it's well thought of, John.
So, my question for you then, there's no reason to upgrade a software user for one year, you know, right? So that would-
Right.
-go through a learning process and then-
And then start all over with another year build-out for a different, yeah.
Right, so why would you do such a thing? So, I guess my question, do you, so, and I've heard the same thing for the last year and a half or two years, the number one thing that the building and planning department really wants is upgraded software. The current software you guys are using is from, what, 1998 or '6 or something like that?
I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of that, but it's just, it's a very-
How do you like that software? Is it user, I mean, can you use-
Luckily, luckily the clerks are more the ones that use the software, but I know that-
You're not, so you're not really using the software that's-
No, for me, when I get a permit, I like to kinda keep everything organized, so I've devised my own system since 2015, when I transferred to building and planning department, where I create an actual folder on my computer, and I label it with the builder, for new construction homes, this is, I label it with the builder, the address, the lot number, the subdivision and phase, where I could then, and I put all the PDF files that they submit digitally for the home on that, and then I send an email to the clerk, say, this house has been reviewed, it's ready for permit. She uses the software then to generate the permit fees and whatnot, and then she emails him-
It's not really software, is it, John? It's more or less just notations or-
I think it's a Microsoft Access spinoff kinda program, but it generates the permit totals when she inputs the data that I do on my worksheet. The good thing about what I do is, now if somebody comes and they don't have their plan to survey, but they need it to give to a pool company to put a pool in their backyard, I can just go to that folder on my computer and search the address or the lot number, and in 30 seconds, I could print them a survey. If they misplaced theirs, they can't find it in their closing papers and stuff like that. And that's where I think, at least my goal, and I think, you know, I spent eight or nine years with Bob at Public Works before I transferred to building and planning, and I think, you know, town-wide, I think now that we're growing, I think the entire town needs some sort of system where everybody can be on the same page, and you can go to a parcel or a lot number, and you could see every demographic, that's my kinda big picture, is you can go to any house in town and say, okay, you know, the lot became a lot of record this year, it was developed by this person, the house permit was given out on this day, the house got a certificate of occupancy on this day, the people put their water in their name and the clerks-
How do you access that information now?
Each department would have its own, like, file cabinet and stuff, and I know, like, when Bob gets complaints and stuff, they go out and do case sheets, which are the, again, the carbon copy where you write on it and it goes through, and they file them in a filing cabinet.
Oh, and this is not computerized right now, this is all on paper?
No, there's some computer aspects, but a lot of it is paper in file cabinets, so it's, like, if you asked me right now how many new construction homes are under construction, I would go to a file cabinet and I would count the manila folders that we have, one for each home with the inspection tickets in there.
So, did they give you some kind of return on investment, like how much time and money this is gonna save the town, labor-wise, time-wise, if, you know, lawsuit-wise, long-term? Did the software company give you some-
No, they didn't go on any of that, but they did say kinda some of the neat things, that you could do like a heat map to see where the most building is and stuff like, so there's other demographics that you'd be able to get at a moment's notice of, you know, what area town got the most in-ground pools, you could filter it several different ways, or-
That would be at Brian's house.
So-
You're getting on my thing.
So my biggest concern is that when these new construction, as they're going along, that they get all of their inspections done, and they get their inspections done timely. How do you?
Well, right now, to submit an inspection, Jason made a portal on the website, and so you would go in and you would input your address, the type of project you're doing, your date and time you want the inspection, and the inspection, and then it comes out of our printer as like a little, I think it's what, five by eight and a half?
Five and a half by eight and a half.
A little piece of paper, we take it out with us, and then we have the correction notice and the green and red stickers.
It's a piece of paper, Jerry.
We do the inspection, we leave the sticker on-site with the correction notice or a green tag if everything was code-compliant at the time, and then we would bring back the paper, put it in the file, or we would put it in a bin, and then the clerks would then, whenever they had downtime, when people weren't at the counter or whatnot, they would grab the stack of tickets that were filled out by the electrical inspector the night before, or the building inspectors the day before, and they would file them, and each, they make a builder file and a manila file with the tab, you know-
Paper file, not a computer file.
Correct, yeah, and then at the end of the project-
There's no way you could sit at your desk and tell me when the last inspection was done on this vehicle, on this house.
We would go to a file cabinet out in the main area, and it would be full of those tickets that got matched up with the homes.
Is that the way most building and planning departments do things in our area? They do it all by paper?
I think for some of the other ones, they're still kinda on the paper-
On the paper.
Stuff, yeah.
Because, you know, because a few of my hesitations, or some of my hesitations for the software, is the next council seems to object to it, right? And so when Mike Bovat was here last time, he had alluded to, my impression was, that he had had some other software that was superior to this in mind. Has he talked to you guys about this? Has he come to you guys and talked to you guys about software or such things?
I know he talked to Jenna the other day, but I was out of the office on inspections when he came, so I didn't get a chance to talk to him. But, I mean, we would be kinda open as the building and planning department, we would be open to any option that would kinda help out, but I think my end goal would be like, I know Bob Valloy, the water operator, was saying that IDEM now wants the town to document the water service material that goes from the B-box in the front yard to your water meter inside, and I know we write on our piece of paper, you know, water line is PEX or water line is copper, and we file it. But if we, if they got software and we, it could kinda communicate, and they could pull up any address and say, oh yeah, this particular house has a copper water service, you know, and I think that's what, from our conversation a few weeks ago, I think that's what the state's wanting to do for the water operators, is know what the water's flowing through to get to all the residents in Indiana to kinda make sure there's no lead or anything in the system.
You can't have any unknowns.
Right.
Bob's gotta have the same problem, because with the MS4 now and the stormwater inspections, he's gonna have all these inspections that are gonna have to be manually done and kept in a file folder, just like your file folder.
Yeah, and that's where if-
The software would encapsulate, you could have an iPad for MS4, you could have an iPad for stormwater, you'd have an iPad for-
And that's kinda my big picture, and again, we'd be willing to wait until next year if that's everybody's, you know, desire, but I think ultimately you would have the MS4 inspections tied with the house inspections, and then that entire lot becomes, you know, one big file where you could see, you know, while the house is being built, there was an MS4 violation for mud runoff into the storm drain, and, you know, and then you could even take it as far as dog tags when people live in there, that, you know, the animal control officer could pull up, you know, how many Yorkies we had in town or whatever by doing all-
So has that happened before, where we've given approval to some type of building project, where there might have been a violation with water or something else where that was unknown to the building inspector?
You just had one, John.
Has a situation like that existed and happened?
I mean, I think there is some-
The BZA.
Some-
Couple of weeks, couple of months.
Yeah, there is some overlap where, you know, everything's in its own silo, and something might not be known to Public Works that we know about, and I think that's where I think getting town-wide, everybody on the same page, with how much we've grown and how much we've changed as a town in the 17 or 18 years that I've worked here, I think that, you know, we're kinda at that point where, with the staff we have and the residents we have, I think we need to kinda get everybody on the same page.
On one to 10, 10 being like, we need this now, one, we can wait for 10 years. I mean, what would you grade this as, as a purchaser, or as needed by your department?
I mean, I think now we know how to operate, and we kinda have, everybody knows what they need to do to kinda keep the communication open within, so I mean, I think right now with three months left in the year, I don't think it's a very high priority to get this done, where, you know, we kinda reassess at the beginning of the year and see, you know, I mean, we've, I've been in the building and planning department for eight years, and we've kinda functioned, we've kinda tuned it along the way, and we've changed kinda the folder system or whatnot, where, you know, everybody, now the clerks kinda know, you know, it is kinda clunky, where if you're somewhere and somebody lost a correction notice, you gotta call back to the office and get them to text you a picture or scan it and email it to you, but I mean, in those rare instances, now that we're not booming with, you know, 458 homes a year, I think that little bit of breathing room that we got kinda alleviated where we were running ragged and unable to wait for something to be scanned to you, so.
Got it. I appreciate it, that answers my question, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, John. Okay, item F, special exception BZA, Falling Sands Distillery.
All right, this matter's coming before the town council with no recommendation from the BZA. This is for a distillery at 9601 Industrial Drive, Suite A. There would be no public consumption on-site, this would be-
Like a new, like, nice place to hang out.
This would be for a special exception. There were no public remonstrance on the matter before the BZA. Since there wasn't a public hearing already on this matter, it would be inappropriate to have any public speak on the matter, as well as next week, for the council to take action. The information was provided to you by the BZA, you have their findings, and there are no recommendation that was submitted.
Basically, at the time, guys, the BZA felt that he wanted to make sure the fire department double-checked it. Kevin, didn't you guys inspect his location for dust and such?
So this is not on this gentleman either, so, so what the state does with plans like that, he submits it to the state, the state reviews it, they review-
Oh, they, okay, I, sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so it's nothing that we've done or not done.
The fire department has nothing to do with it.
IDHS does that.
Okay, okay. And what did they say?
Well, so here's-
So, so this is what I was, what Joe was alluding to?
Yeah, we can't do this.
You can't take the petitioner's comments, just like you couldn't take public comment, because the public hearing has already taken place. Your job as the reviewing body is to kinda review the documents of what was presented at the BZA and make a decision.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
If you allow the petitioner to talk and address you and present further information, then you've got to reopen a public hearing. You'd have to notice everybody and so that's kind of what Joe was.
Well, thanks Dave. Don't want to get involved in that.
We don't want to get down in the weeds on this case.
No, no.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. But, um, this is going to be before you at the, um, council meeting. So if you guys have any questions, um, regarding this matter, then, you know, please let me know. We can forward that information, um, to the building department, um, or to the BZA and ask for any other clarification. But, but I think you just clarified one of the contentious points.
That was the point of the BZA.
The Indiana Department of Public Health is the one that would, or would be the one that would get the clarification on that, right?
So, so plan reviews at this process go for stuff like this and bigger things go to Indiana Department of Homeland Security?
Homeland Security, I'm sorry.
In the Fire Marshal's office. I could give you contact.
As a state fire marshal, right?
The Fire Marshal's office does that. They do plan review.
I have my fire engineer right here.
But.
And he, I'm, I'm sorry, but he's not going to be able to speak.
He's not going to be able to approve it. So.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, one of your options is to approve the exception contingent upon him getting the approval from the state fire marshal and Department of Homeland Security, right? Like, so that's certainly, uh, that was, it was in the purview of the BZA too, to send you a favorable recommendation.
Pending that.
Pending, you know, contingent upon their receipt of that. So you could put that contingency on there and that's certainly something we can discuss.
Okay.
Did, did the BZA discuss that as well? That option?
They weren't sure of the rules.
Yeah. You gotta look at the minutes. I'm not sure.
There's no interpretation.
I'm not sure.
The minutes, the minutes are attached there too. So.
Yeah. They, they just, they didn't know what to do. So basically.
I think that's, that was the, the issue is that they weren't sure which direction.
Exactly. And whose approvals were needed. Right.
I was asked to send a video in. Uh, the lady I talked to from the city told me that this would be a good, apparently it's obviously not a good time to talk, but did you guys get the video?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah.
Cause this is a million variance originally.
I know we had some, there were some photographs that were attached to the, the recommendation. No recommendation.
Yeah. The BZA without moving forward, without any authorization from the state or Department of Homeland Security, they won't, the BZA won't do anything. They'll say no recommendation because they don't have a clue.
We should probably not discuss this any further.
Right.
Amongst yourselves you can. I mean, and what's in the minutes, right? Like, and, you know, Brian was there, so he's got, he can kind of color in the lines a little bit of the minutes, but the minutes are pretty complete. I mean.
Right.
Had I been at that public hearing and the BZA expressed that concern, I would've told them, if you're inclined to give a favorable recommendation, then go ahead and do it, but make a contingent on that, right? Like all approvals necessary, whether it's state fire marshal, Indiana Department of Homeland Security, et cetera, et cetera. He's going to need those anyway, right?
Oh, I, yeah. I didn't want to step out of my purview.
So then I just want to get clarification. This is being proposed in an industrial zoned area.
That's correct.
But it needs the exception because it's in our overlay. Correct?
Not only the overlay, but there's a concern about health issues as far as the dust that may be.
No, no, no. That's not, you don't come for an exception or an exemption because it's dusty.
No, no. That was one of the questions.
Why are we getting, why are we asking for a special exception is my question?
Uh, my name is Jim O'Malley. I'm with Sumac. Uh, we're the architects.
I'm sorry, sir. I, I've, I've only said it five times. I, I don't know how to be more polite. And so I'm just going to be blunt. You guys can't talk.
Okay.
All right.
So this is a zone industrial. Why does it require?
Because of the, the.
Special exception.
Because of the, the specific use.
Use. Correct.
Okay. Okay.
They want to refine grains, I guess.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah. I mean, this, it's, I don't think this was kind of conceived as far as during our zoning, um, development, when they, they did this, this was in a, a use that was conceived.
Right.
So that brings me to another point, but we can talk about that later.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Your ordinance requires it is, is the answer to, like the short answer to your question, right? Like it, it requires a special exception.
I don't want an answer. I want a reason.
But that, but that is the reason, the use.
It's because when whoever drafted the ordinance decided that, that for this particular use, they wanted to have this additional oversight, right? And the oversight being go to the BZA and come to the council.
Okay. And it's within your.
I'm not commenting on the wisdom of that. I'm just telling you that, that, that's the way it was set up.
And it's, it is within the council's purview to, to either grant it or deny it. I mean, it's.
I understand. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
And, and I suppose that's on you, the, the BZA meeting's on YouTube, right?
Well, the point of it is.
You could watch it if you wanted to.
Yeah. Being a liaison, I don't stick my opinions in because I don't think they carried the weight. Yours would. Okay?
Well, and, and frankly, and I think you and I have talked about it, Brian, it would be, the, the BZA is supposed to be five citizen members. That's not a member of the council. And the, it would be inappropriate for the liaison to stick his opinion.
And they always ask me what my opinion is. And I always say, I don't have one. You know, it's not my job.
Right. You're going to get it, right? Like you're going to get it at, at this phase, right? Like, so you get to weigh in now.
Yeah.
Not tonight, but you know, you'll weigh in in a week.
Right.
Okay. Okay. You're good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Let's move on. Uh, gee, plan commission considerations.
Okay. So, um, this is to accept the performance surety for St. John Commons in the amount of $187,069. This is for phase one, St. John Commons.
Okay.
Um, the next one is for the performance surety for Continental Unit Three. This is to accept the performance surety for that in the amount of $5,500. Uh, the next one is for the Gates Unit 25. Um, this is to accept the performance surety for that in the amount of $13,530. Um, the next item is for the maintenance, uh, letter of credit for the Preserve Unit Six. This is, uh, to accept three-year maintenance letter of credit for the Preserve Unit Six in the amount of $256,481.70. The next item is for a use variance for Clark Pediatric Dentistry at 9321 Wicker Avenue. This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation from the BZA for a medical use for 9321 Wicker Avenue, Clark Pediatric Dentistry within the US 41 district overlay. Next item is a special exception for CLD Holdings for 9525 Wicker Avenue. This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation from the BZA for a drive-through restaurant, uh, with C2 Commercial Highway Zoning District. Um, this is for the proposed Chipotle. Um, the next item is for a use variance for CDL Holdings 9525 Wicker Avenue. This matter also comes with a favorable recommendation from the BZA for the use of outdoor seating within the US 41 district overlay. Uh, the next and final item for the, um, building and planning items, um, are the special exception for SR and A, Andy, uh, 10845 Parish Avenue. This matter comes to you with an unfavorable recommendation for tobacco and vape shop proposed at 18, 10845 Parish Avenue. The unfavorable recommendation was unanimous four to zero.
Okay. Any questions on any of that?
Nope.
Okay. And we move on. Item H, ordinance establishing the NERC and, uh, LPA program fund.
Yeah. So this ordinance will be, uh, for the establishment of a grant fund for the NERC Klein Avenue project, um, which was begun in, I think, 2020, 21. Um, and I know, Daniel, we kind of talked a little bit about this. I don't know if you want to kind of address that.
No, that basically covers it.
Okay.
Item I, ARPA transfer resolution.
So this resolution is presented, will balance out the ARPA fund, uh, 2402. Um, just kind of brings everything into balance. There's no additional, um, authorizations on the ARPA fund. It's just balancing it out.
And the ARPA transfer resolution.
Did that one.
I'm sorry. That's what we just did.
That's okay.
Um, okay. Jay, the increase above max levy for civil sanitary and water.
And I'm going to, Daniel, I'm going to have you go ahead and talk.
Sure. So as Councilman Swets asked me 16 hours ago, no, I'm joking. Um, we, we are at.
Only one.
On our main budget, we are anticipating levying the maximum levy, uh, just a little bit higher so that when the state goes to look at our budget after you adopt it, they get to shove us back down to maximum. So it's a, it's a technique we use to make sure we are collecting the most tax dollars possible.
To make sure you get the maximum.
Yes, correct. And so what this excess levy appeal is for, you all looked at, you all approved this last year as well for our budgets. Um, it's a three-year average of our assessed values. And if we exceed the state's three-year average, then we get to apply for this. It's, it's a, it's a threshold. So we, we got approved for it. And so we're going to ask for $500,000 on our civil tax levy. Um, sanitary, what is sanitary, we're going to ask for $30,000 and water, we're going to ask for $25,000 in excess of our levy.
Right. So are these asking that we're, that we're trying to get the max levy that, are they all the same percentage?
Yes. Well.
So we can, we can do a budget and we can do a 3% increase. And in order to go higher, you need to have the max levy approved. Correct?
Yes. Uh, I may be a little bit confused by our question. So we, we have our budget, we have our property tax levies that we set for all the separate property tax funds. This is in addition.
Right.
To that. And so we qualified by an extenuous amount. So we're asking for, I believe it's four or five percent of what our, our general fund property tax levy is, which comes out to about 500,000.
Okay. And we do have those, we do have those funds anticipated in this, this budget.
Okay.
So obviously if we did not get the excess levy, then those funds would have to be reduced. Reduced out of the, the town's finances at that point.
Right.
However, we did get it last year and.
And the year before.
And the year before. And I don't think we will, will not get it. Uh, we've had some substantial.
Our growth is pretty significant.
Development. I mean, yeah.
So this is just simply because our growth rate is, is, is stronger than state standard, right? So that we, we have, we have stronger growth than that. So we're capped below actually what our expansion rate is. So we need, so this is the mechanism for capturing that additional revenue.
Right.
Which we're needing.
So the state.
Right.
The state recognizes that they've capped us and they allow us to request an excess.
And as I said earlier, our, our increase in assessed value over the last five years went from 1.2 billion to two, over $2 billion now, which is a 38% increase, which is huge.
Right. Mm-hmm.
It will anyway.
And we would starve them for, they would starve them for resources.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. All right. Item K, agreement with Mad Bomber for Christmas in the Park.
So this is for the approval for the fireworks for the Christmas in the park. Um, Mad Bomber has, um, you know, given the town the same price as he did for last year's. Um, this is the same company that's provided the fireworks for the Freedom Fest as well. Mike, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that or is that pretty much it?
I may jump for that. I did get the, his permit and everything looks, thanks for that. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, item L, 93rd Avenue Project.
Okay. Um, so the project cost on this escalated from the original, um, cost estimate from 2020. So, um, as you recall, we, we kind of truncated this project, um, and excluded the Kyleman Avenue, uh, portion of this, uh, which would have added an additional $700,000 to the project cost. What was not considered at the time that, uh, we did the, the bond, um, was about $672,000 in engineering costs, um, both for design and construction phases of that. Um, with the remaining payouts on the, the project, we're estimating about $392,000 is going to need to be, um, needed for the completion of the, the project plus the engineering, uh, cost on this. Recommendation, um, that was given, um, to do an additional appropriation, um, from our, uh, MVH fund. Uh, we currently have about 1.1 million in the fund. Um, with the additional appropriation, um, that will still leave us a very healthy fund balance far in excess of the 35% maximum reserve. Um, with respect to that, we are sending over to the clerk treasurer's office next week to advertise for the additional appropriation. So with that said, Evan, if you would kind of give us an update on the project, where we stand on that?
Generally speaking, uh, we still will finish this year. I know there's probably been some concern, everybody driving by. We finally have some asphalt, some concrete on that north side. Um, we were going to switch traffic this week. However, things just kind of didn't line up with the Oktoberfest. We made certain promises during the negotiation for this project. We would not, um, do any harm to making sure that festival could happen just like we did for the July 4th festival. Um, so to keep things clean at that driveway entrance there, we did not switch traffic this week. Um, current game plan is we have a few more, a little bit more concrete work to do at the intersection on the north side of 41 there at the gas station and at the Walgreens parking lot. Um, we plan on switching traffic Monday roughly, Monday afternoon maybe. And then we're going to start milling out, uh, the south side of the road come Tuesday. And then it'll be full steam ahead for, uh, dig out. Uh, we have roughly a few days worth of structure work, storm sewer work on that south side. Uh, Kyleman has about 200 foot of water main that will be started, uh, last week of the month, maybe first week of the month. We haven't got confirmation from our underground sub yet on when they'll be in. Um, maybe a month's time, we should start seeing more asphalt go down, uh, for the water main trench patching and the additional widening that we have on the east side of the intersection. Um, so it's a moving target as every day out here. Um, but we are seeing progress out here now. So, um, we'll, we do, will finish this year.
Traffic's going to be going still eastbound.
That is correct. We will move, everybody's going to be moved.
Just switch to the other side.
Yeah. The north side. But it's, it was a requirement or it was an ask of the town to have us keep eastbound traffic for the flow.
So just switching lanes.
Just going to be showing everybody the north side.
Now, are you gonna, there's still going to be a final coat of asphalt to lay on what's already down?
That is correct. Uh, we only ever bring it up to intermediate.
Another inch and a half?
It's, uh, I think it's a two-inch surface on this project. Um, so it's roughly two inches down right now. Uh, we'll get all the other asphalt reconstruction, the widening in, and then resurfacing under flagging at the end.
I was going to say it's going to be.
Question about Kyleman is will Kyleman still have a turn lane when that approaches 93rd? I know we, we've curtailed some of what we're doing.
On Kyleman, there is going to be a left and a right turn lane.
There still will have those turn.
Yes. That is, that portion of the project was still kept in.
Okay. Cause that, yeah.
You're going to have to go one way or the other.
To accomplish that, would, we still kept the, the first 300 foot of that roadway is what we needed to widen in order to get that extra lane in. So that is still a part of this project that will happen. That's, we'll be starting that construction sometime next week. It's been slightly demoed, but we'll get that asphalt milling out of there. Water main will get installed, services and then concrete and, uh, curbs and sidewalk. And then we'll get the asphalt.
That makes me happy because that's, I think it's one of the important aspects of this job is, as well, where there's so much traffic rolls out of there. So, yeah.
Then there will also be a westbound left onto Kyleman off of 93rd, which is another big aspect of that intersection in particular. So anybody traveling westbound should no longer get backed up by somebody turning left onto Kyleman.
Sounds good.
I'm good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so long.
Oh, of course.
Anybody else have anything to add?
And we're done.
Okay. We are adjourned.